Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for April 1st, 2019. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen. Absent. Commissioner Lanson.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Chair McMahon.
Here.
Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, this evening, we have two supplemental packets, both affecting Item 7A on the agenda. One supplemental packet was released Friday afternoon, with the second supplemental packet being released this afternoon roughly two hours ago. Please see support staff over to the right if you would like a copy of those supplemental packets. Thank you.
Do we have any public comments? I didn't think so, right? No public comments. The consent calendar, item number six. We have the minutes of March 18th, 2019. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments, or is there a motion to approve? I think you have to push your button.
I hit the button.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Cohen absent.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, there has been a request to proceed with item number eight prior to item number seven, and so we're going to do that. So item number eight is the department reports, and, let's see.
Thank you, Chair. For department reports this evening, we have consistency with the City Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and 2020 to 2021. This fiscal year's program for capital improvement described projects planned by Public Works through the city for both short-term, over the next two years, as well as long-term, over a five-year period. The California Government Code requires the Planning Commission to make a general plan consistency finding for Public Works projects. That's why this item is here for you this evening. In order to do that, staff evaluated the general plan versus each project in the capital improvement budget, and compared that to the goals and policies of the city's general plan. The capital improvement program budget for this fiscal year runs... Today, there was a capital improvement subcommittee meeting. This evening, we have the Planning Commission meeting. This item will be presented as a study session item in the City Council on April 2nd, which is tomorrow night, and then it'll return to council in June for a hearing and potential adoption of that budget. To conclude this report, staff is recommending that this item be approved as consistent with the city's general plan. To help with that this evening, in the event that there are questions, we have staff here, both from the Public Works Department, as well as the Finance Department, to answer any questions the commission may have in that regard. With that, that'll conclude staff's presentation.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Parker, just a few questions. Why are there two years incorporated in this process as opposed to just one?
Generally, the city's budget program runs on two-year cycles, so rather than come every year, it typically comes every other year for update and consistency as the budget's updated.
Okay. And are there any projects being carried over, or are these all newer projects?
There are some carryover in terms of projects that were on the CIP budget last time this came to commission, as well as a few new projects here and there.
And would this be the priority that's been changed according to the process? Is that why it's not been... Well, is that why it's being updated?
I can't speak to the priority of each project. However, each project has to be evaluated for general plan consistency in order to be included in the budget.
And are these just projects that the city is doing, not involving any county or any other administrative agency, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion in that case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the commission find the City Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021 to be consistent with the Thousand Oaks general plan.
Are we okay to take the vote? Okay. Would you mind doing the vote for me, please?
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Cohen absent.
So at this time, I'm about to open the meeting for item 7A, and it's an official public meeting, so I want to have respect for everybody. I know that there's a lot of people who have things they want to say. I don't want anybody to feel intimidated, so I don't want to see any clapping, or any booing, or any noise from the gallery. I'd really like everybody to feel comfortable to come up and say what they have to say. The way it will work is first we'll have a staff report, we'll have questions to staff, then the applicant will have 15 minutes, the applicant along with any of his advisors or team members. At that point, we'll have public comments, and because at this time, I think we have 21 people who would like to speak, each person will have two minutes to speak, and then we will have comments from staff again, and in this way, we can all proceed, give the applicant a fair hearing, and everybody can say what they need to say. So at this point, I will ask for you to open the public meeting.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, SUP 2018-70220, to allow construction of a service station and a convenience store, 7-Eleven, open 24 hours daily, located at 2198 North Moore Park Road, applicant Megdal Thousand Oaks LLC.
Thank you.
Presenting this item will be Steve Kearns, Planning Manager, with the Community Development Department.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair McMahon and members of the commission. As mentioned, a special use permit has been filed requesting construction of a service station and a 24-hour 7-Eleven convenience store, which is not proposing any alcoholic beverages or tobacco or vaping products. Shown on this vicinity map is the location of the subject site, which is located at the southeast corner of Avenue de Dallas Flores and Moore Park Road. This is an aerial perspective of the project site. It's delineated in the red boundary. The property is bound by three streets, Kai Jasmine shown here to the east, Avenue de Dallas Flores to the north, and Moore Park Road to the west. Also east of Kai Jasmine are single-family homes, and then northeast across Avenue de Dallas Flores are more single-family homes, and then to the north, across the street, is a commercial shopping center. To the northwest, across the intersection of Moore Park Road and Avenue de Dallas Flores is Thousand Oaks High School, shown here. And then across Moore Park Road to the west are our single-family homes. And immediately adjacent to the south is a medical office building. The subject site is Zone C1, which is a neighborhood commercial shopping center designation. This site was formerly a service station, which was approved by the City Council in 1968, and then constructed and began operation in 1970. The building ceased use in 2005 and was demolished. The property's been vacant since then. In 2009, the property owner began soil remediation to remove contaminants from the soil resulting from fuel storage, underground fuel storage tanks. This was certified by the County of Ventura in 2014, as all remedial action been complete. Shown here is a photograph of the site, looking across Moore Park Road to the east. In the background are single-family homes. This is looking at the subject site southeasterly through the project site, across the intersection of Moore Park Road and Avenue de Dallas Flores. To the right in the image is the commercial medical office building. This is a perspective looking across Flores through the site, with the medical office building in the background to the south. And shown here is the commercial office building located immediately across the street to the north, and then to the northwest, across the intersection, is Thousand Oaks High School. This is the proposed site layout for the request. Shown here in the southeast corner of the site is the proposed 7-Eleven convenience store. Adjacent to the east is a 10-foot-wide landscape strip, and then adjacent to that is a 6-foot-high garden wall located along the property line. There's a trash enclosure in this location. There are also a total of 10 parking spaces on-site, two here, and then eight in front of the store. Access to the site is provided by driveways at Avenue de Dallas Flores, as well as a shared driveway access off of Moore Park Road here. There are three fuel pump islands, each with one fuel dispenser and two hoses, so it could have six cars at any time, but feeling. There's a canopy above the site, and again, there's perimeter landscaping along Moore Park Road and Avenue de Dallas Flores. These are the elevations provided by the applicant. The trellis is shown here. It has a flat roof, solid roof cover, metal roof. It is 17 feet tall. Shown, the second elevation is facing the office complex, and the overall height of the highest element is 29 feet, and the balance of the building is at 19 feet. Facing Kai Jasmine is shown here, and this has decorative leadstone materials oriented towards the residential areas, along with a standing seam metal roofing material. And then the last image is the front of the building, and it incorporates the leadstone material, as well as a couple of trellises on each side of the building. This is a rendering submitted by the applicant. This is essentially looking southeast to the site from the intersection of Moore Park and Flores. To the front is the landscaping planter strips. You can see the driveway access off of Moore Park Road here, and there's another off of Flores in this area. Each pump island is shown. There's three of them, with each one dispenser, and a canopy trellis above it. The front of the proposed 7-Eleven building is shown here, and the site perimeter wall is shown in the back of the image in this location. And for scale, you can see the medical office building to the south, on the right side of the image. This is another perspective rendering from the applicant. It's looking at the site southeasterly from the intersection of Kai Jasmine and Flores. You can see the fuel pump islands and dispensers, the driveway access off of Flores, as well as the building. This image is shown without landscaping, so you can see the rendering of the building. The next slide actually shows it with proposed trees that we will be reviewing through a landscape plan if this project was approved, and this shows how the trees conceal the building from this perspective. The Planning Commission review is required for this type of special use permit application, and the project also requires waivers of minimum lot size for service stations, as well as a setback waiver. Special use permits are used for uses that are not a matter of right in a specific zone, and can be considered allowed if the uses are considered appropriate for its location, and this is to ensure compatibility with the surrounding areas and surrounding uses, as well as avoid adverse impacts to any use in the area. In this case, the surrounding uses to the north are the commercial shopping center across Avenue de Dallas Flores, located at 2220 North Moore Park Road. To the northeast are single-family homes. East across Kai Jasmine are single-family homes as well. Immediately adjacent to the south is a medical office building, and west across Moore Park Road are single-family homes. Northwest across the intersection of Avenue de Dallas Flores and Moore Park Road is Thousand Oaks High School. In 1967, the City Council adopted service station guidelines. This was the first iteration of these guidelines, and they were adopted to create standards to allow these types of unique uses. We use these standards to evaluate any new or modified service station. This ensures compatibility with surrounding uses and maintains appropriate development standards for that location. These service station guidelines were updated in 1969, then again in 1970 and 1972, which is the current iteration we're using today to review service stations. The key criterion difference between the earlier versions and the 1972 is the 1972 version established a parcel range of 20,000 square feet minimum size to 40,000 square feet maximum size. In this case, the lot size for the property is 19,943 square feet. This is what was on the submitted site plan by the applicant, city records, the county assessor record, and the title report. Recently, the applicant submitted two plans indicating lot sizes of 20,000, about 20,080 square feet, and another about 20,040 square feet. These documents are not official records of survey, nor are they boundary surveys. They were not signed by an engineer, and they are not recorded with the county. So the only recorded lot size staff has to rely on is the 19,943 square foot. Evaluation of the site, the building setbacks are required to be 100 feet from the center line of each street. In this case, the building, the convenience store building is only 40 feet from the center line of Kai Jasmine, so that does require a waiver. It does, however, meet all other setback requirements for the project site. Architectural design, the convenience store building incorporates flat and pitched roof elements, which does provide horizontal and vertical interest to the building. Also, large inviting storefront windows to the front. The front of the store, as well as the east elevation facing Kai Jasmine, incorporates a decorative stone, and the other surfaces use earth-and-tone stucco materials. However, the canopy structure is out of character with the neighborhood. It uses a flat roof, as well as a metal roofing material. And then the pitched elements of the 7-Eleven convenience store also uses a standing seam metal roof building, which is inconsistent with surrounding neighborhoods, the surrounding properties. In this case, the medical office building to the south uses a concrete slate material. The commercial shopping center across Avenue de Dallas Flores uses a concrete S tile, and then in the residential tracks, it's predominantly asphalt composition shingle. With regard to development standards, the C1 zone prescribes a maximum height of 35 feet. The convenience store building is, the highest element is 29 feet, and the canopy is 17 feet. The municipal code requires 10 parking spaces for the proposed use, and they are providing 10. The maximum structure coverage for the C1 zone is 25% of the lot, and they are proposing 21% structure coverage. And the municipal code requires 5% of the net area of the site to be landscaped, and they're proposing 21%. The service station guidelines allows a maximum of three pump islands, and they're proposing three. And the number of fuel dispensing units per island is a total of four, and they're only proposing one per island, with two hoses per dispenser. The driveway access, again, is off of Moore Park Road and another off Avenue de Dallas Flores. There are two existing curb cuts, one near the intersection of Flores and Moore Park Road, and another off Kai Jasmine, and these are to be abandoned. In accordance with the service station guidelines, part of the review is to determine compatibility with the surrounding uses. In this case, the use itself is about 70 feet from the nearest homes on Kai Jasmine. Also, the 24-hour proposed, the proposed 24-hour use will create noise that's not typical for the area, and as mentioned, there are some material and design components that are architecturally incompatible with the surrounding areas. Now, switching gears for historical perspective, the property, the commercial property across Avenue de Dallas Flores to the north was originally a drive-through dairy, which ceased its use in the early 80s. This dairy use had a history of students congregating on the site and creating trash and nuisance to the customers and to the residential neighborhood to the east. In 1985, City Council considered deed, zone change for this location. They changed it from C1 to C2, and in doing so, they enforced a deed restriction on the property, which was allowing only low-intensity uses. This was intended to prevent students from congregating on the site and address the issue that the dairy had. In 1987, a development permit was approved to allow construction of the shopping center, and it, by reference, adopted the restrictions imposed for the zone change. And again, in 1999, the property owner sought additional uses, which were granted. These were all low-intensity uses as well. Over the course of this review, staff has been communicating with the applicant, began early in June through July 2017, through various email correspondence. At that time, the applicant had a couple of concept plans for the location, ideas. One was a drive-through Starbucks, which they shelved and actually came forward after that with a project to see before we denied, at least concept-wise. At that time, staff expressed concerns with the proposal as it relates to the sensitive uses in the area. Staff explained that the commercial building to the north had a use restriction that would not allow for a convenience store, and that staff would not likely support the application. In March of 2018, the applicant had conducted a pre-application meeting with staff. At that time, they were informed that the lot size was deficient, the minimum size requirement, and that the 24-hour operation would not be appropriate for the location. This item was originally scheduled for the Planning Commission meeting on October 22nd, 2018. The applicant was advised of staff's recommendation of denial. The applicant had then requested continuance of the hearing, and so they could perform additional community outreach. On November 28th, 2018, staff met with the applicant's team. They expressed the same concerns and encouraged the applicant to perform community outreach at a location that was in close proximity to the subject site. On October 11th, 2018, the applicant conducted a community outreach meeting. This meeting was located at 290 Canayo Ridge Avenue. That's a StanTech offices, and according to the applicant, 19 people attended that meeting. They invited people within 300 feet of the project site, which was a little lower than our mailing notice, which is 500 feet. On December 24th, 2018, the applicant conducted a second meeting, and this time, they conducted the meeting at 2525 North Moore Park Road, which is a community center nearby, and according to the applicant, seven people attended that meeting. At the time the staff report was prepared, staff received 75 emails or letters. The breakdown, that is, 55 of those were against, 16 were in favor, and one was partially for and partially against. Since the packet was completed, staff has received several more correspondence letters and emails, both for and against the project, and those were contained in your supplemental In review of SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, staff has determined that this qualifies as a Class 32 exemption. Class 32 is used for infill developments, and there are five criteria. One is that it's consistent with the general plan designation. In this case, it's commercial. That occurs within the city limits on a site that is less than five acres, and as mentioned, the site is less than five acres. The site was previously developed and has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, threatened species. That the approval will not result in significant effects related to traffic, noise, air, or water quality, and that the site can be adequately served by all utilities and public services. So in approving this type of special use permit, the commission must make all of the following findings, and I'll read them each. That the project is consistent with the Thousand Oaks general plan and any applicable specific plan or redevelopment plan. In this case, it is consistent with the Thousand Oaks general plan. The project has been reviewed in conformance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, and as mentioned, it does qualify as a foreign exemption. The three italicized are the three that the basis of staff's recommendation are on. That the project complies with all applicable laws, regulations, and policies, including the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. In this case, the applicant is seeking two waivers, the minimum lot size for service stations, as well as a setback waiver on the Kai Jasmine street frontage. That the project will not be detrimental to public health, safety, general welfare due to the 24-hour nature of the operation. It will create noise impacts that are not typical of the area, and that the proposed use of the proposed location will be compatible with land uses in the vicinity, and based on the architectural design and the operations, staff has determined it's not compatible. So in conclusion, staff, the lot does not meet the minimum lot size for service stations, which is 20,000 square feet. That the setback waiver is not appropriate on the Kai Jasmine side. The roofing material is incompatible with roofing materials in the area. The 24-hour operation will create noise that's not typical for the surrounding area. That the overall operation is too close to residential, having the nearest residential 70 feet across Kai Jasmine. That the location is in close proximity to the high school, which could result in students congregating on the site, and therefore, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission deny the special use permit based on the findings contained in the resolution attached to your staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff, available for questions.
Why don't we start with you, then?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kearns, for your report. Appreciate that. Regarding the lot size restriction, that service stations need to be between 20K and 40K, if my math is correct, this is 57 feet, 57 square feet under the 20,000-square-foot requirement?
That is correct.
Have staff or the applicant explored the possibility of acquiring any small adjacent lot that's 60 to 100 square feet, some small plot of land that would bring the application into compliance?
I did have a discussion with the applicant, and he mentioned he would reach out to the medical office property owner to see about acquiring additional land from him.
Okay. I'll follow up with the applicant on that point as well. But that would, if that transfer were to happen and the deed were to be recorded at the new size, that would meet the 20,000-square-foot requirement?
Yeah, that would meet that technical requirement.
All right. Also regarding the rules for service stations, about precedent, since the rule change in 1972, has the city approved any service stations on lots that are smaller? 1972, has the city approved any service stations on lots that are smaller than 20,000 square feet?
Not since the lot size was established. There are several, I believe eight, that are on lot sizes less than 20,000 square feet, but those were approved prior to the guidelines.
Yes, you mentioned that in your report. Those are effectively grandfathered in.
Correct.
All right. But, but there's no, there's no precedent for a new station being approved with, with a lot size that's smaller than the 20,000-square-foot limit?
That is correct.
Right, okay. Another concern mentioned in the report was that the service station would be within, I'm not sure of the exact distance. In some parts of the report, it says 70 feet, and in others, I think the resolution says 60 feet. So I'm not, I'm not sure. One question is what's the right number? And then the larger question is, is there, well, two questions. One is, is there a precedent for approving a service station that's 70 feet or closer to residents in the city?
The, the numbers, I'll clarify that. The numbers themselves, the property, from the boundaries, they're 60 feet from the residential homes. The building itself that's proposed for the convenience store is 10 feet further back, so it's 70 feet from the residential uses. With regard to the service stations being closer than, well, there are several, there are 20 service stations in the, in the city right now, and about half of those are located within 200 feet of residential areas. None, well, some are immediately adjacent. There's one, two, there are three immediately adjacent, and a few others that are within 70 feet.
Okay, so, so there is precedent for service stations that are 70 feet or less distance from residences right now?
Yes, there is.
Okay, great. One of the attachments is a remedial action certificate saying that the old ExxonMobil station had been cleaned up. And my question around that is cleaned up for what? Does it, does it certify that the, the property is, is, can be appropriately used by anything that's, that's okay in the C2 zoning? Or is it only service stations, or are there, are there any other restrictions?
Well, the remedial action is remove contaminants to make the site, the site safe to develop. So they remove contaminants related to fuel storage tanks that may have leaked within the, the ground below.
Right, but does that, does that certify that the property is therefore suitable for use for, for any application that's permitted by the zoning for that, for that land?
Yes, it does.
Could it be a sandwich shop, for example, or a, I'm making up things here. A sandwich shop or a?
Yeah, there's no restriction on use.
Parks are allowed, but?
Yeah, it's just certifying that the property has been?
Has been cleaned up.
Cleaned up, yes.
Right. Not, not cleaned up enough for a service station, just it's clean for whatever use.
For multiple uses, right.
Right, okay. You mentioned the EIR or the CEQA exemption in your, in your report. We don't need an EIR for this case. And one of the metrics for that is that there's no significant addition of traffic, noise, or degradation of air quality and water quality. I know Ms. Lowry and I have had this discussion before, but just for the public's edification, we're not saying that there's no additional new traffic or degradation or additional noise or something like that. It's that there are predefined thresholds that a project would need to cross to trigger an EIR. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Regarding tobacco sales at the store, I'm unclear. There, there are some references saying there's no alcohol and there's no vaping products. There are other references saying there's no alcohol and there's no tobacco. So I'll ask the applicant as well, but, but is it the city's understanding that any nicotine delivery system, if you will, would be prohibited for sale at this, at this location?
Yeah, we would have to talk to the applicant expressly about that. The service station guidelines outright prohibits the sale of alcohol. In discussions with the applicant, they indicated there would be no tobacco or vaping products. So if we went forward, staff would impose that as a condition of the project. However, we did receive a letter from the applicant's attorney recently, which indicates that they would like to sell tobacco products.
Right, so we, I'll ask the applicant about that. And again, you know, I want to echo what, what Chair McMahon said about public comment here. Let's, let's, let's deal in facts and what's in the case and not responses to this. Everyone has a chance to respond to that. But, but your understanding is that the applicant may be asking for permission to sell tobacco products, but not vaping products?
That is my understanding.
All right. I'll follow up with the applicant about that. Another objection on the staff's part was the hours of operation, because other service stations in the city operate between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM at most. Are there any other service stations in, in the city that operate outside those, outside
Yes, there are total six service stations that are 24 hours.
Okay, so not, again, not a precedent?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. This is just a clarification. You have a table in your report on giving the setbacks, and in, in all but one instance, the application is in compliance with, with the given setbacks. I just want to be, be sure I understand. There's one, one entry for the rear of the building where it says the setback is zero feet. And one, is that correct? And two, is that, that's okay, given the city's guidelines?
In the C1 zone, there's no requirement for a setback, for a rear yard setback?
Right. And in any event, there's a 10-foot landscaping strip behind that as well, correct?
That's adjacent on the neighbor's property. There's a four-foot wide landscape planner, but that, the building on the, I think, first I needed to find which property is front, which one's rear and side. The property line that's adjacent to the medical office building, that is technically the rear property line.
And that's the zero, the one that's referred to as zero foot?
Right, right.
So, so the, the very edge of the building would come right up against the boundary with the medical office building?
Yes, that, that's correct.
And that's permitted by the city's architectural guidelines?
By the municipal code, yes.
Okay, yeah. And I want to stress that, I'm asking that question for clarification. I'm not taking a position for or against on that. I think, well, I do have one more question, and the rest of these refer the applicant. You mentioned in your report this evening that a previous iteration of the application considered a drive-through Starbucks at this site, and that that was shelved. Why, why was that shelved?
At that time, staff was not in support of that request as well. We have, we have some history with a drive-through Starbucks on the corner of Rancho and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which generates a lot of traffic, which spills out into the right-of-way. And we anticipate the same type of impact on the site, because the site is very, it's a small site.
Okay, so, so the concern was the amount of traffic given the size of the site?
And the, yeah, and the stacking of the drive-through lanes.
I see, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Okay, I got a couple of questions. Thank you, sir, for the report that was very informative. My first question is, you said that you recommend that they mail out within 500 feet, but they only mailed out within 300 feet. Do you know how many homes are within 300 feet of that property? I just want to get a reference for what percentage of people responded.
I do not have that number. Perhaps the applicant can?
All right, well, I'll try to do some quick math here. We are aware that there are six stations in the city limits that are operating 24 hours? I only know of two of them, so six is news to me. But I, my, my question is, are any of them adjacent to residential properties? The two I know of aren't, but I don't know about the other four. Just want to make sure I'm informed here.
The closest is about 170 feet.
Okay. And then I, I had another question, more about the history of the town. I grew up on basically the corner of Keats and Arboles, and there used to be a Chevron station there, if anybody's old enough to remember that. That is no longer a Chevron station. It's a residential place. Then I moved over to the other side of Moore Park Road, and there used to be a Shell station on the corner of Olson and Moore Park, and that is no longer there. That is now a medical office building. And then I was thinking of the, the one that was on Jantsch. I don't even remember. It might have been a Shell station, but that's now Wells Fargo. So it seems to me that there's a history of these, of these service stations disappearing and turning into different uses in the city. Has there been an intent on the city's part to, to not recommend gas stations and look for alternative uses for these properties in the, in areas that are more adjacent to residential?
No, there's been no proactive approach by the city to, to change the use from a service station to another use. That's really a decision that the property owner makes.
Okay, so that's not something we're encouraging. That's just going to happen by chance.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, copy that. I think that answers all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Kearns, for your report. I just have, actually, two brief questions. With regard to the setback issue, if the setback issue was enforced as to the building, how big a building could they actually put on that lot?
Well, I think any development on that site's going to require a setback waiver. It's just that where you take that setback waiver is, is the key here. In this case, we're actually taking setback waiver toward the residential area, which is one of the more sensitive uses. So that's, that's where the issue is.
So would that waiver apply whether it was an office building, or a restaurant, or anything else as well?
It would apply to any development on the site, right?
The other thing I was looking at in terms of the square footage, you mentioned there was going to be a shared driveway on Moore Park with a neighboring property owner, right? Hit the button.
Yes, that is correct.
Is that require the applicant to have an easement across the other property, or is it actually going to be separate?
That easement already exists. That was imposed in 1968 with the original approval.
So the applicant's business actually would be using the neighboring property owner's driveway? Is that correct?
They will expand it, yeah, and they will use that driveway.
Any idea how much the expansion would be, approximately?
I believe the overall width is 40 feet. I'm not sure what it is now.
Okay. With regard to the, to back and ask the applicant, would it be possible to do a deed restriction, not allowing the sale of alcohol and tobacco, to the extent the applicant was agreeable?
We can, we can impose that condition if the, if we went that way.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you. I just had one question. I believe I read in the report that the shopping center that's across the street has some time restrictions. It has to, the businesses have to close by a certain time. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, all but one use is restricted to the hours of 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The Domino's Pizza located there, they had approval from the Planning Commission for later delivery hours. I think they, I believe on weekends, they're all open until 1:00 AM.
But that's because there's no customers that go there. That's because they just, they don't have anybody?
Right, it's delivery.
No traffic.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? Okay. At this point, I will ask the representative of the applicant to come up and speak. If you'll state your name and city of residence, and you have 15 minutes, and anybody on your team who you'd like to speak, that's within your 15 minutes.
4765 Villa Don Luis, and following me will be Mark Sellers, attorney, and then the client, Taylor McDowell. I thought the lot size was settled. The handout that you're getting, if you'll notice at the top there, it's a letter by the civil engineer surveyor, noting the fact that the site is 20,043 square feet. The second sheet is a survey. We have to do a survey on every project to be legal. We cannot build from an assessor's map, which is what was used to get the number before, and that number's incorrect. The actual site area is 20,043 square feet, which is large enough for this project. The service station at Olson Road and Moore Park is, shares common property lines with residential on both sides, and the building backs right up to the houses. The site, as mentioned, was cleaned up when it was, after it was closed down, and it's now open again. Can be used for anything. Client has promised not to sell alcohol or vape products. The setback issue, it has to be 100 feet from the center line of streets. Well, the site's only 125 feet wide, so that meant you couldn't even build a building here. The, the two projects, one to the south and one to the north, both got relief from that setback requirement. Otherwise, they wouldn't be there. As you mentioned, the environmental review said this project, approval of this project would not result in any significant effect relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. The site was a gas station for 36 years until 2006, and we discovered that there are only six new families that moved in since that gas station was torn down. The previous gas station had a repair shop, auto repair shop, which can be pretty noisy, as you know. It had four driveways. One was to the rear. We're now just putting one out on, on flores, and then we're sharing, half that driveway on the south is on our property and half on the neighbors. So we're tying them together. If you look at the 3D, first 3D, we added a six-foot stone-covered wall 10 feet back from the property line on the back, and we will landscape between the sidewalk and the wall for privacy and security. And then we're adding a row of large trees, as you see in that 3D. And we virtually hide everything on site with those trees. We do not have any physical openings across the Jasmine side, the backside, street side of this project. You have to come around on the sidewalk if you want to enter the site. The neighbors asked us to add lighting to that wall for security, because I guess some of the students would hang out behind some of the buildings on the way home from school. So we intend to light that and have low landscaping, so it'll be totally safe and secure. Then the next 3D is what it looks like without trees. Notice the trees across Moore Park Road in the background totally blocks out those houses across the street. If you look closely, you'll see a dark green roof. It's a metal roof, which is totally the color allowed within the design guidelines, and a material allowed in the design guidelines. At the corner of the 101 and the 23 freeway, the northwest corner, there's a medical office building. It's been there, I don't know, 20, 25 years now, I guess. It has a green metal roof. The green metal is still quite sharp and like it was when it was put in. The office building, to the west of that building, is, has a red tile roof, and the one to the, it would be to the left of it, or to the, to the north, has a shake tile, or a, yeah. shake tile, or, yeah, concrete tile shake roof. So you see, none of the roofs match, they're all different. There was no, apparently, intent on the city to have those three buildings match in any way. And my point is that the houses are all asphalt, as staff mentioned. And if you look to the right of the, in the third 3D, if you look to the right of the convenience store, you will see the existing medical building, it has off-white, flat concrete tile. It wasn't white when it started, but it faded, because concrete fades terribly. And it's just a bad material to try to color, you've probably seen it in sidewalks and so on. The retail center to the north is a red mission tile roof. So in the past, there's never been any attempt to try to match the residential or each other. It just didn't happen. Now, in the staff's condition, they asked that we use concrete instead of metal, but they didn't say what color. They just said, "concrete." My client still wants to use green, but I suggest that if we put it on metal, it'll stay for a long, long time. If we put it on concrete, it's going to fade away, it's going to look dirty, it's not going to look good. So I would ask that that condition, not allowing us to use metal be removed, and I'm, sorry, I don't have the number. Forgot to write it down. In our meetings with the neighbors, I did not hear one negative comment about the architecture. In fact, I had several people after the meetings come around and compliment me on the architecture, at least they liked, seemed to like the project, so just wanted you to know that, I think that's very important. I noticed at lunchtime, a lot of young people flee the campus in their cars, apparently going to lunch. And of course, if this is built, they won't have to leave the campus, they can just walk across the street and there's food available, good food. So with that, if you have any questions, I would be pleased to answer.
Did you want to have any of your team to speak at this time?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to have any of your team speak at this time?
Well, I'd like to answer some questions, if you don't mind.
Sure, that's great. Okay, so if they are going to speak, this is probably the time, and then we can ask questions of all of you.
Okay. No questions then?
Not until we're done with your 15 minutes. Could you please state your name and city of residence?
Of course. Hello, good evening, commissioners, my name is Taylor Magdal, I'm the applicant. I live in the city of Malibu, and actually have had historically wonderful experiences here in Thousand Oaks. Played in soccer, club soccer games here, tennis tournaments, and I love your community, and ever since we conceived of this plan, I have tried to do the best I can for the community. I mean, anything and any development we pursue, I really put myself in the feet of the neighborhood and the beautiful community here. And I'd like to just distribute to you guys a little notebook that we prepared, just to kind of walk you through my brief presentation this evening. Can I step forward? And pardon the one of those binders that has the post-it notes, we ran out of the binder slip, so just bear with me. The, in the left pocket, I just referenced the planning and zoning code, Article 12 for C1 designations, and I think it's pertinent, commissioners, because C1, you know, I think we're suffering from the fact that this property's been empty for 10 years while it's been remediated, so, you know, fortunately, I think for a lot of the residences, they've seen a beautiful grassy knoll fenced off safely and securely, you know, for 10 or 11 years. And they, I think, have forgotten that it actually is zoned for commercial uses, that this property is actually legally, in fact, you know, retail-compatible. My architect noted, we did a survey of the transactions in the Kaya Jasmine area, and it was interesting to note that all but seven home transactions occurred before this was being remediated, so in the last 10 years. So everybody but seven knew this as a mobile gas station and a noisy, loud lube shop. And if you look on tab one, it actually is an old image I found. I think it's an interesting two photos, it's from 1967, dug up from Thousand Oaks High School library, and it shows Moor Park Road and Thousand Oaks High School. And noticeably, it also includes the mobile gas station, which, as planning staff indicated, was built in 1967, 1968. I think there's some discrepancy, it might have then opened in 1970, consistent with Mr. Kearns's. Also in tab one, I show you the actual photos of this mobile gas station. I mean, and it's one of those vintage, old, and ugly versions of a gas station. It's the version of gas stations that I think have given the whole segment a bad name. It's got that tiled roof, it's got very kind of ugly signage, and it's definitely not a beautiful service station. On top of it, it included those lube shops, which are both loud and unhealthy smell-wise, and contaminated, in this particular case, the soil so badly, it had to be decommissioned for 10 years and cleaned up. So if you compare the four first photos of the mobile gas station and what Mr. Scribner has put together, I think it's a vast improvement. You know, we have incorporated over, you know, the top expensive elements to this project. I mean, it, as my staff was calling it, it's the Beverly Hills of 7-11s, which I think visually you can see, we have the gorgeous landscaping. Mr. Kearns noted, 21% of the lot is landscaping, and we even incorporated landscaping on top of the canopy, so the willows fall down beautifully to cover up the canopy. We've also incorporated a lot of stonework, which is expensive, but we want to do it, because Thousand Oaks is a beautiful place, and we want to put the best property we can put on that corner. The idea really was here to beautify that corner and take what was an ugly version of a gas station and replace it with the best version of a gas station. And I want to also, you know, outline to the commissioners how we came up with this gas station concept, because it was, you know, three years in the making, and a lot of difficulty, and a lot of pensive, and a lot of conversations that surrounded it. We had first come, because we represent Starbucks as well, and we met with Hader Malani, and he advised us that, you know, he would not recommend a Starbucks, they were having issues consistent with Mr. Kearns' testimony, and that was not an option. And he recommended my first stop be to Principal Lictel, because with 2,000 students at a very important and prestigious high school catty-cornered to us, obviously, that was the stakeholder that we should first listen to, amongst the others that we subsequently did. So when I went and met with Principal Lictel over, you know, three or four different times, he agreed that Starbucks would not be appropriate, it would be a hangout, and he, funny enough, said at the time, "Taylor, think tables, and that's what I don't want." And I thought, "tables, okay, we can't have tables, that means we can't have Starbucks, that means we can't have a restaurant, that means we can't have yogurt shops, that means we can't have a Jamba Juice, because all those businesses are commerce-related to the students and have, you know, a wider breadth of interaction with the high school." So we defaulted, really, to replacing the gas station. And I, believe me, I get it, it's not the most exciting and glamorous use, but it's an important use, I mean, we all use it regularly, and as one of the commissioners noted, they are, you know, not, they're not making a lot of them anymore, and actually, Thousand Oaks is underserved with gas stations. So, again, we really tried to listen first to the high school, and that was the only palatable use Principal Lictel actually would approve, so that's what we ran with. And it should also be noted that one of the tabs, you'll see the email that Principal Lictel sent me, which is, "I sent staff, you know, an email saying, 'We're a go, and I'm in.'" And it was also followed up with the new principal, since it's taken two years to come to fruition, Dr. Bergman also recommended approval of our project. He even got behind the 24-hour, hours of operations as well. So that was, you know, all kind of originating from the high school. But the second mandate also was to accommodate the police, because, you know, there is a record of homelessness and some loitering around the office project. So that was number two priority. And thankfully, we were able to accommodate Damian Alvarez's wishes, and they're not opposing us. They can't formally take a position of approval, but they're not opposing us, which is tantamount to approval.
Okay, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Oh, sure. So in sum, there is a long history of also, you know, gas stations being somewhat close to residences, and I think, you know, the original applicant, the seller who's in the audience tonight, also pursued a mixed-use office development, which they seemed like it was sensible, but it was two stories and would have cast shadows on the residences, and also incorporated a residential curb cut, so that was impalatable to the city. So kind of in the scheme of what we could do with this property, which is a great location, and it's 20,000 feet, so it's a good size as well, were inhibited by not being able to have a retail use that has a table because of the high school. We can't have a two-story office building, because that would cast shadows, and employees would park in the residential neighborhood. So this was really, by default, what we had to do.
I think, I think your time is up.
Okay, sorry.
All right, thank you. Stay up there, there's probably some questions, and if your team wants to come up to answer questions also, that might be helpful. Who wants to start? Commissioner?
Good evening, and thank you for your presentation. I want to follow up on some, some of the questions we went through with staff.
Sure.
Let's assume that the square footage of the lot stays at its recorded size, that you're not at 20,000 square feet. Are you amenable to working with some surrounding property owner to get up to the level you need to be?
Absolutely, Commissioner, and I've spoken to our adjacent property owner, we have a wonderful working relationship. As staff also noted, we are sharing that egress and ingress on Moor Park, so we have been collaborative, so I can pursue that, but again, we also do have a survey that stipulates that it's 20,049 feet.
I understand, but that's not what's recorded at the moment. So, so, to get something new recorded,
Yes.
if I understand you correctly, you're saying you would be amenable to finding some parcel for sale and buying it?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay, great.
So if you want to, yeah, condition your approval, let's say, on us meeting that 20,000, we will get there.
I appreciate that. And, and also, just for full disclosure, I should, I know Mr. Here will have my head if I don't mention, I didn't realize that the owner, as well as the tenant of the building next door to you, Nadine Bartley of Bartley Physical Services, I'm a frequent client of hers, and also a personal friend. I don't think that colors my judgment on this matter in any way, but I do need to disclose that.
Yes.
Okay. There are 10 parking spaces proposed in this application. Approximately how many of those would be used by staff, both during the day and overnight?
We project that, you know, one to two would probably be used, but also 7-11 has a good history of having their employees ride-share, so where somebody has one shift, you know, there's a fair amount of crossover. And actually, one of the concerns with the previous owner's attempts to get a mixed-use office project was employee parking in that residential neighborhood. So we've been very cognizant of that, and allowed for at least a spot or two for employees plus the retail customers.
Okay, but in terms of head count, at the convenience store, we're talking about one to two? Is that a fair range?
That's a fair range.
Okay. And is that also true at night? It's one person or two persons, or how would that work?
Yeah, it's mainly, I mean, it would be ride-sharing, and there's also a bus stop that's close by. A lot of employees use public transportation. So especially for a seven or eight-hour shift, you know, even the residential parking, let's say, behind the store, in this case, doesn't accommodate seven or eight hours. So we would be making sure that the employees are either parking on-site or using public transportation to get there.
Okay, what I'm really getting at, though, is the public safety angle.
Yes.
Mr. Scribner, and his, Scribner, sorry, in his testimony, characterized the setup with the cameras and the lighting as being, quote, "totally safe and secure," close quote.
Yes.
So I guess I would ask, is one person who's there on the night shift
Yes.
sufficient to ensure that this is indeed totally safe and secure?
Yes, and that's a good question, thank you, Commissioner. There is one person who's very trained, who works a night shift at 7-11s. It's definitely one of those shifts that has to be manned by, or woman, by, you know, one of the standard, you know, escalated training, and very knowledgeable about the gas pumps. God forbid something happens, they know what to do, and so forth and so on. And also, just to mention, commissioners, the, the, the security apparatus and the cameras that we've promised the Thousand Oaks Police Department, the Kaneho Valley School District had mentioned they'd like it to be real-time monitored, which we are offering to install and have a direct feed into the Thousand Oaks Police Department's Command Center. So it wouldn't just be reactive footage, it would be proactive capturing, it would be a real-time monitoring of that corner. So even though the gas is, you know, discretionary, it is a benefit to development to have, because the canopy actually encompasses and houses a lot of that security apparatus.
Commissioner Newman, did you have any more questions?
I do, I have two more, thank you. The tobacco question. Would the applicant, yourself, your team, be willing to accept the condition that prohibits sale of not only vaping, but tobacco products, nicotine delivery products of any kind?
So, you know, for us, the communications between, because I'm the middleman at the end of the day, 7-11 and Dallas headquarters, you know, and I, you know,
Do you have a representative from 7-11 here?
Unfortunately, he's ill tonight, so
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but I will definitely get back to you on that. I mean, we have promised not to have vape sales, because that was a sensitivity of the high school. Principal Lictel and Dr. Bergman both agreed, obviously, no beer, no wine. Happy to comply with that, that's reasonable, and
Right, I'm only asking for the one area that is not clear, which is around tobacco.
Yeah, and it is ambivalent right now, because it, on purpose.
So if we were to hold the vote one minute from now, we're not able to say that that you or 7-11 as the applicant would be able to commit to no tobacco sales, is that a fair characterization?
If you guys want to all vote for this project, I will, I will make sure there's no cigarettes there.
Okay, well, I'm saying tobacco, nicotine of any kind.
Right, no, I mean, the stance of 7-11 is, you know, tobacco used secularly is not on an incline, it's not a problem. The vaping epidemic is, for sure. So when we went and when we were, you know, conversing with the 7-11 executives, the big questions to them were vape and alcohol, and those were answered decisively, and the big questions to them were vape and alcohol, and those were answered decisively and for the communities while being no's. But we just haven't posed the question about actual tobacco.
Right.
Just because it wasn't brought to our attention by either the high school or the police department, that they either wanted those. So I would be more than happy to ask the question of them. And if you do want to condition an approval on them not selling it, I would be in Dallas Headquarters tomorrow, fighting your fight. Because ultimately, this, I want this to be a win for the community, too. I mean, it's a beautiful project, we want it to serve the kids.
Okay, so I understand your personal willingness to accept a condition prohibiting tobacco sales. The question I'm asking, though, is can we move forward with this project with a prohibition on tobacco sales?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, we can, yeah, I just don't know. Unless I have a clear definitive answer from them, it would be speculative, so I don't...
Let's take that as a don't-know.
Yes, a don't-know.
All right, thank you.
I just don't know, yeah.
All right. The final, well, there are several points of contention between the city's guidelines and the application as proposed. The final one I want to ask about is the hours of operation.
Sure.
It's true there are some other 24-hour service stations in the city. It's also true, as Commissioner Bus pointed out, that the ones that are 24-hours are farther away from residences. Would the application, would you, as the representative of the applicant, be willing to accept the condition that has the same hours, restriction of hours, as surrounding commercial properties?
So, yeah...
6:00 AM to 11:00 PM?
Yeah, so from a practical standpoint, what we've noticed, even with 7-Eleven stores in Thousand Oaks already, is the night business is actually not that ferocious or lucrative, right? It is, you know, kind of a younger, going-to-bed town. So the reason we have applied for 24-hours is more for a safety and security question because if we, you know, close up shop at 11:00 or 12:00 at midnight...
I understand why, I understand the arguments for 24-hour, and I've read the principal's letter to that effect. What I'm asking is a different question, though.
Okay.
Which is whether the applicant, yourself, the applicant role, as a, playing that role, would accept hours that are shorter than 24-hours.
What I would like to do is actually propose a middle ground, which would be, the Domino's Pizza application had requested a six-month trial of their extended hours, which are to 2:00 AM now. So what I would offer the commission, which I think is a fair middle ground, is to say, "Let us try the 24-hours for a six-month period. If for some reason it has adverse effects, unintended consequences, there are issues with that format, then we will come back in front of you and adjust the hours accordingly."
Okay, you still haven't answered my question. I appreciate the offer you're making, but that's not the question I asked.
If, I suppose this sounds like a little bit of a negotiation, which I'm happy to entertain. We, the, I think the more pertinent element of, let's say, the hours of operations would just be to be in line with our competitors, which seem to be around 5:00 AM on an open and around midnight on a close. If you look at those tabs, the USA Gasoline Station is 24-hours, but most of the other gas stations also are early openers at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, and most of them are late closers around 11:00 or 12:00.
The surrounding businesses have restrictions that are 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and the specific question I'm asking here is whether you would accept those restrictions.
We could probably manage, because it's the morning traffic for the gas sales, Commissioner, is such that a lot of people take off early to get onto the freeway at about 5:30 or 6:00. So we would need probably an hour at least earlier than that 6:00, but we probably could make a 12:00 or 11:00 o'clock close maybe suffice. I mean, I'm speaking a little out of turn, but it's not inconceivable.
That sounds more like an almost yes than a yes to me. If you want to say, no is a perfectly acceptable answer, I'm just trying to gauge where you are on the hours that are set out in the city's guideline.
And Commissioner, it is vague.
Either answer is fine, yes or no, I'm just trying to get to one of those two.
No, and Commissioner, and from our standpoint...
I'm not making a value judgment on either.
What we just want to make sure is we're actually doing what's consistent with the neighborhood, one, but also can justify 7-Eleven making a $4 million investment, right? So I understand that 24-hours is a sticking point. What our first preference would, you know, we would ideally want is let us prove to the city, let us prove to you Commissioners...
Right, and I've got it, but that's not, again, there are guidelines for commercial operations in this area, and they're imposed on your commercial neighbors across the street. And those hours, again, are 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Right.
If that's not okay with you, say so, that's fine.
Yes, we could not make it work with 6:00 to 11:00. If you said to us, if you said to us that 4:00 or 5:00 AM to 1:00, we can probably make that work.
Then, yeah, we can have a, we can haggle over price.
Exactly.
But, as, but to the question I'm asking, is 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM okay? I understand your answer to be no.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
But we always want to be agreeable, so that's the idea, right? I mean...
I understand that. Let's move on to further questions. Commissioner? Okay.
I just have a few, because I know we have some young ones here, we want to get their comments there, so I'll keep it quick. Just to understand, are you individually the applicant? Is it Megdal? Is it some other entity? Who is the applicant here?
I am actually the applicant. It's just, unfortunately, the 7-Eleven representative that could make the unequivocal answers that Commissioner Newman asked is not here tonight. So I'm just kind of, unfortunately, having to punt on those.
Again, I noticed there was a letter from somebody else that indicated a different entity, Lompoc Ocean.
And E, yeah, so it's just, so I think the purchase-and-sale contract with the seller is under Lompoc Ocean and E, but the applicant is actually Megdal Thousand Oaks LLC.
Okay.
So the property will be acquired from the seller through Megdal Thousand Oaks LLC. And it should be noted that he's standing right next to me, and he's a great guy as well, and they have tried to do something with this property for three or four years as well. And, you know, I think we all acknowledge this site's sensitivity. It's across from a high school, it's been a green patch for 10 years.
Just looking who the applicant was, I got it.
Sorry.
With regard to the documents that Mr. Scrivener provided, I see there's a stamp on the front email, the survey, does it say in there the square footage that you're indicating is what it is?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, that survey, I'm sorry, I probably didn't highlight your copy, but if you look, it's a small script on the left-hand side.
Sure is, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Where?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's...
Just, just...
We need you to just stay at the podium, sorry.
Is there, oh, it's on the document someplace?
It is on the document.
Okay.
It says 20,049 feet.
And do you know if there's an actual copy of this map with the actual survey or stamp on it?
Yes, and that was provided.
Excuse me, we need you to speak into the microphone, otherwise nobody can hear you out in TV land.
Out into the TV land, yes.
So there was a copy of this map with a survey stamp on it that was provided to the city, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, and that was given to the city back in 2015.
Well, this was just provided to us a few days ago, correct?
But, yes, it was provided just tonight for, in that binder, but it had been submitted to the city back in 2015, and I also gave it to Mr. Kearns last week as well.
We'll follow up. Thank you, nothing further.
Either, Commissioner?
I'll be real quick, everybody's asked you a lot of questions, and I know a lot of people out here want to talk. My one question is about the security issue and your arrangement that you're willing to make with Thousand Oaks Police Department. My question is, if there's a feed going to the police department, who's covering the cost of the officer that's going to be monitoring that?
That would be on the police department. So we are installing the infrastructure, and we are having our cables accessible through a private closed-circuit technology to be fed into the command center.
So basically, it would be, taxpayers would be covering to make sure that your building is safe for our community?
Well, Commissioner, it wouldn't be, if, they could reject our offer, right? So if they don't want the eyes and ears and those cameras to be monitored by them, we don't have to give it, right? This is...
Well, we were talking about how a 24-hour facility, there is potential for danger, and I'm curious, do you have an alternative security plan beyond the TOPD?
Sure, sure. No, 7-Eleven has, you know, its own security, obviously, infrastructure in place. They have security monitors that cover a number of different stores and communities. So there's obviously private security officers that monitor stores. There's also a command center for actually 7-Eleven internally to be monitoring what's going on. It's just, we like to offer cities the additional layer if they want access to the same feed that 7-Eleven Headquarters and Command Center is seeing as well. It's an additional level.
I just wanted to be clear on that, because I wasn't sure if that was your security plan for this facility and...
Oh, no, we, thankfully, 7-Eleven is one of the best-secured, you know, convenience operators in the world. They have, you know, a staff of, I think, 72 folks in Dallas that just handle their security apparatus and how they conduct, you know, these sorts of things.
So you do have an internal plan. That's all, that's all my questions.
So I just want to follow up with that. So you're saying that 7-Eleven has people in Dallas who are monitoring all the 7-Elevens' live feed all the time?
There's, yes, so Commissioner, thank you for the clarification. There are regional, obviously, command centers and regional receivers of that real-time footage. So it's not almost any atypical than, let's say, having a Nest system to your residential home, you see it on your phone. 7-Eleven has 32 cameras proposed for this site. All 32 of them will be fed to a regional command center that also is accessible at Headquarters in Dallas, but it primarily will be operated from the regional office, which is in Southern California.
And somebody is watching that feed?
Constantly, 24/7. And they also employ their own, you know, actually, in-house staff that, you know, monitors a lot of stores, especially where they're close by to one another. And then they'll also hire outside security staff to monitor stores as well.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay, you're off the hot seat for a few minutes.
How'd I do?
After all this, you will have an additional five minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Now I think it's time for staff comments. I'm sorry, not yet, I'm jumping ahead. I'm so sorry. Okay, so we will go to public comments, it's your turn now. I will call the first three, so that as the one person, the first person is speaking, the other two can get ready to speak, and we'll just move on the line. Because we have 24 speakers, we're going to have two minutes apiece, and you will see a red light when your time is up. And at each time you come up, please state your name and city of residence. And I want to remind you again, let's be really respectful, so everybody feels comfortable saying what they, what they want to say. So the first one I have is Peggy Rosenberg, and after that will be Lauren Yanos, and then Nicholas Yanos. And I'm sorry if I'm not saying your name properly.
I'm Peggy Rosenberg, I live here in Thousand Oaks. Was there some other identification I'm supposed to, oh, good, okay. I felt compelled to come tonight because in all that I've read over the months and months of this process and whatever I've heard, there's a concern that I've had, I haven't heard anybody make, bring up, and that is, actually, was, it's kind of was exacerbated tonight when I saw the placement of the building and the pumps and so forth. When, I spent several years driving up to the high school, coming up Caya Jasmine to Las Flores, and the concern is the fact that you're going up a hill to the stop at Caya Jasmine. If you're making a left turn, you have the traffic that is turning right from northbound Moore Park Road to try to see. When you have the pumps and you've got the vehicles at the pumps, and on some days there's bound to be a gas truck making a delivery, the visibility from that stop on Caya Jasmine isn't really very clear. I've found that there are times I have to pull out farther than I'm really comfortable, given the speed that some of the people whip around the corner there. So I just, I don't know how that could be mitigated, but it appears to me to be something that needs to be looked at a little more closely perhaps than it has. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have Lauren Yanos, then Nicholas Yanos, and then Jenna Cantonese.
Hi, I'm Lauren Yanos, resident of Thousand Oaks. We live at 615 East Avenida de las Flores, which is diagonally across the street from this property. And I currently stay home with my 16-month-old son, and I wanted to bring to your attention some of the issues that I see particularly during business hours between, specifically between school dismissal and around 5:00 or 6:00 PM, that I've noticed since staying home. We already currently have a lot of foot traffic coming over to our area, mostly the kids coming over after school and waiting to get picked up by their parents. They will stand in the street, they will stand in our driveway, several feet into our driveway. They also congregate behind the Domino's, and sometimes we've seen them skateboarding between our driveway and the Domino's driveway. And it's just, it's already a very high-traffic area. I think there's a, there's a lot of, there's going to, it's going to create a lot more traffic in this area, the students coming over, but also drivers in this area. In addition to the traffic, we've experienced a lot of litter on our property, not just in the street, on the sidewalks, but actually in our, in our front yard. You know, outside of the normal things that you would expect to see, napkins, papers, things like that, you know, we've, we've seen everything, pizza boxes, yard sale signs, grocery bags, fast-food cups, plastic bottles, cigarette butts. At one point, a car license plate was in our front yard, and a scooter, which was picked up two days later, presumably by the owner. We get a lot of things in our yard, and this is an issue with these supposed low-intensity businesses being across the street, I can only imagine, with a gas station and convenience store.
Thank you. So after that, we have Nicholas Yanos, then Jenna Cantonese, and TR Cantonese.
Hello, and thank you, Commissioner. I'm Nicholas, Lauren's husband. As a resident of this area, the address that Lauren mentioned, 615 East Avenida de las Flores, kitty-corner to the project site, we see a lot of the traffic that comes through this area. And of particular concern to us is the location of one of the entries in between Moore Park and Caya Jasmine on Las Flores. There have been a number of rear-end collisions already in this location because of a multitude of factors, one of which is trying to make a difficult left turn across oncoming traffic from Las Flores onto Caya Jasmine. We do this to get into our driveway, which is maybe 50 feet further than the intersection, but I have almost been rear-ended, I've seen rear-end collisions in front of me, and we've heard them multiple times from living here, due to the fact that people have to brake on short distance from the intersection that you can see in the image that's right in front of us, fortunately. If you add in more drivers needing to make right-hand turns and the possibility of pumps being backed up, which occurs at all gas stations, this is only going to create more of the concern, similar to what the Starbucks proposal would have generated, which is cars spilling into the roadway. So we see this particular entrance and exitway as high-risk, and have also seen elderly people and children crossing the street at Caya Jasmine, even though there's an intersection with crosswalks at Moore Park, and so we understand this to be inevitable out of convenience. Those protections will be at an elevated risk in addition as a result of increased traffic through these particular driveways. The 24-hour establishment is not going to reduce crime by having a security system. In fact, it's, that's just a method of addressing security problems that work, crime problems that will arise as a result of this establishment. So we don't necessarily see that as a positive to this establishment. Patron vehicles will be making noise, people inevitably open their cars... Patron vehicles will be making noise, people inevitably open their car doors when they're locked, alarms go off, car stereos will be happening. The Domino's that's very close to us has large delivery vehicles. We expect the same thing early morning, compression brakes, loud noises. Not the sort of thing that you want in a residential neighborhood. Appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have Jenna Cantonese, and after that, TR Cantonese. Please state your name and city of residence. Which one is it?
My name is Jenna Cantonese. I reside at 844 Caiet Clavel, right up the street from the proposed location. I'm obviously in opposition to the convenience store and gas station down the street from my house because of the traffic that'll cause in my neighborhood where my children and I walk daily down the street. My son rides his bike. We chose this neighborhood to raise a family, and I don't, if I wanted the convenience of a 7-Eleven and a gas station right down the street, I would have purchased a house in Woodland Hills or Santa Monica, more of a city. My parents grew up here in Thousand Oaks. I was raised in Moore Park, but we chose to be in Thousand Oaks specifically in this neighborhood because of the maturity and closeness of our friends, the safeness it has here. The convenience store is here at the end of my street. The traffic with the children who go to the school, there's hundreds of kids that cross that crosswalk every day in that tiny bit of sidewalk that we have. We don't have sidewalks on our neighborhood. We don't have streetlights. So we don't have that conveni, we don't have the, the lit neighborhoods, you know, to spot out people. We do have random weirdos walking down the street because it is dark, hiding behind our cars, and thankfully, we have put in our own security cameras, you know, just because of that. But the 7-Eleven would cause even more of that. I don't know, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have TR Cantonese, and after that, Bea Sosa, and after that, William Buchanan.
Hey, my name's TR Cantonese. I live on Caiet Clavel here in Thousand Oaks, California. They keep calling it a gas station, but it's really a convenience store because that store is massive. So before, when you had that gas station there, it was just, you know, little convenience store, maybe two pumps. That's what it was zoned for. If that's what they wanted to put in, a regular gas station open regular hours for me, I'd be fine with that, but that's not what this is. It's a convenience store that's open 24 hours, that's going to have lights, it's going to have people, it's going to have just chaos. So when I drive home at night, it's nice, it's quiet, it's Thousand Oaks. I'm home. So if I was making the left on Flores going home and there's this monstrosity with lights and people and chaos happening at all hours of the night, it's, it's not coming home. It's, I'm in a city, I'm in LA, I'm wherever. It's not comfortable. So to me, I had the pleasure of speaking to Taylor on the phone. You know, we had a good conversation about snow and where to ride in Mammoth, but our talk about the gas station pretty much didn't go anywhere. You know, I said 24 hours is a concern. Can we modify it? And basically he said, no, as he's told you. Everything about it is just kind of iffy. Is it 20,000 square feet? Is it 19,000 square feet? Is it going to be open 24 hours? Is it not going to be open 24 hours? Are we selling tobacco? Are we not selling tobacco? It just, you know, I want to trust you, but I don't want to trust you. So to me, that's my position. I got written petitions signed here, homes within 500 feet, every single person signed saying no, and then every single person on Caiet Clavel signed saying no. So I don't know if I need to hand this to somebody, but that's it. Thank you.
You can give it to the city clerk. Thank you. Bea Sosa, and then after that, William Buchanan.
Hi, I'm Bea Sosa. I've lived here in Thousand Oaks for 25 years with my husband and three children. I'll try to be really quick because I have a lot of things to say, but my youngest daughter just graduated from Thousand Oaks High School. She, my kids continue to go to sporting events and things there that, because they're alumni. So I felt like I needed to speak because I kind of wanted to share a little bit of my experience. My husband and I own a property management company, a real estate company, off of Wilbur and Moore Park Road, across the street from the 7-Eleven that's there, which is not that far from the Thousand Oaks High School and that area. That 7-Eleven is also open 24 hours a day, and so I can kind of share a little bit of experience of the problems that we deal with pretty much on a weekly basis. But quickly, I wanted to address the fact about the school board has taken a position, not opposed or for, but they have shared the same concerns that the community who are opposed to it have shared. And the principal's name, who's, the principal presently at Thousand Oaks has signed that. So it has changed from what the developer has previously stated. I have communicated with the school board, I'm sure you guys have gotten the email about that, and them sharing their concerns. The PFA of Thousand Oaks High School is opposed to this project happening, and there also is another petition that has close to 1,000 people that have signed it, that are opposed to it. But quickly, yes, the traffic is a problem with the 7-Eleven that we work across the street. I go there Monday through Friday. We deal with delivery trucks. These are big diesel trucks that are parked on the street as they're supplying 7-Eleven with their merchandise, so I'm sure it will be the same with this 7-Eleven if it goes through. Also, yeah, there, there's an increase in accidents. At Thousand Oaks High School, you have thousands of students leaving, arriving and leaving every day at the same time, pretty much. You have new drivers, you have lots of traffic there. So to, to bring in a 24-hour convenience store or gas station will increase the traffic tremendously.
I think you need to wrap it up now.
Okay. So anyhow, there's homeless, vagrants, traffic, accidents, the crime, shoplifting that I'm sure students would be tempted to do. Not all of them, but the main thing is the cigarettes, just the fact that they are even open to allowing the cigarette sales. We have to put our students before profits. It is irresponsible to have the sale of cigarettes at anything that's across the street from a high school. Thank you.
All right, now we have, oh, excuse me, we're not doing that, remember? William Buchanan, and then Lila, Lailua? Lila? Lila Mack, and then Brock Spielman.
My name is William Buchanan, and I live on Caiet Jasmine at the first cul-de-sac going east. And one of the biggest points that I'd like to make is when that was a gas station, I moved there in 1971. And back in 1971, I think the population of Thousand Oaks was in the 20,000s. Now it's 120,000, and that makes a big difference. At times when I leave my house, if I go up to Avenida de las Flores at Caiet Jasmine, you cannot make a left turn there at different times of the day. The traffic is all the way backed up across the intersection. So the traffic coming out of that gas station, 7-Eleven, will probably be coming out on Flores. And all the stores or whatever that you mentioned along Moore Park at Olson, Arbolas, and Jan's, they don't have an access immediately to the residential area, which I think is a, a problem. So that's, my biggest issue is the traffic problem. And I would like to see something done with that corner. It's been vacant for a long time, but I don't think, excuse me, I don't think this is the right thing to put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Lila Mack, and then Brock Spielman.
Hi, I'm Lila Mack, and I live in Thousand Oaks, California. Almost 1,000 taxpaying residents of Thousand Oaks have signed a petition stating they do not want a 24-hour gas station and convenience store at this location. No matter what you may hear tonight, this is clear. Here are the signatures from residents of Thousand Oaks who are opposed to this development. As Bea said, in addition, I'm aware that the CBUSD School Board formed an ad hoc committee to investigate this proposal and wrote a letter to the city with their findings because, the school board president noted in a public meeting, the Thousand Oaks High School principal does not have the authority to speak on behalf of the students in this manner. The letter included very serious safety concerns for the students attending the high school across the street. Being that the school board and almost 1,000 members of the community are against this development, I do not see how it makes any sense, but I will reiterate a few points. From a city planning point of view, this gas station and convenience store are not only unnecessary, but a nonsensical decision. There is currently a 7-Eleven, at least six gas stations and as many convenience stores, at least five grocery stores and major pharmacies, and a 24-hour gas station, all within two miles or less from the location. There are already several of the same options available nearby. We currently have enough gas stations and convenience stores in this area, full stop. Also, as noted in the staff's report, interview of any special use permit, section 9-4.2803 of the TOMC establishes prescribed findings that must be made for this type of special use permit, including that the project will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. It is easy to establish that the project will be detrimental to the public health of neighbors within 500 feet, what with idling cars and trucks. Safety and general welfare issues abound with the proximity to Thousand Oaks High School and the additional vehicular and pedestrian traffic that will be created. Further, the zoning, as with the service station design criteria, requires compatibility with the residential pattern of development and should not create either architectural or traffic concerns, which it most certainly does.
Thank you. Oh, can I give you this? Brock Spielman, and then Kiana Spielman, and after that, Robin Caswick? Please state your name and city of residence.
Hello, my name is Brock Spielman, and I live in Thousand Oaks, California. For kids like me who do a lot of sports and ride bikes in my beautiful neighborhood with all of my buddies, I would like there not to be a 7-Eleven here because of fights, gangs, and violence. Another point is, my sister walks to school every day. I don't think she would feel safe going to school with homeless people at a 7-Eleven. My point is, what are a lot of security cameras going to do with no one watching them? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brock. I think that it's terrific that you came up here to give us your opinion.
My name is Kiana Spielman. I'm a member of Thousand Oaks High School. Every morning and afternoon, I walk to and from school, seeing things that most of you probably won't until the property's built. There are students that get off the bus every morning from the bus stop to TO. Where you are going to put the bus, where are you going to put the bus stop if there's an entrance to a 7-Eleven located where the bus stop is? Students use this bus stop as a transportation to school every day. After school, students are sitting against that fence, bending it, waiting, talking, and hanging out. This is already a hangout without something in, on that lot. Once you put something there, there is going to be an even bigger problem. The 7-Eleven is put up, I will no longer feel safe walking to and from school, which mean I have to get a ride from my parents, who have full-time jobs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have Robin Caswick, then Amy Wilson, and after that, Bill Wilson.
Hi, my name, oh, my name's Robin Caswick, and I live at 380 Teasdale Street, so I'm two houses down from the high school. I want to start by saying, the reason why there weren't very many people at the last two meetings is because an undated notice was sent out about a week before the meeting. The first meeting, we had two weeks, and it was 500 feet. I, I got my message about the second meeting on Nextdoor, which is the app that has 1,000 signatures, and I couldn't get off work, so I couldn't go. So it wasn't even a choice, so I don't feel like the developer approached that in very good faith. So I've lived in my house since I was nine years old, and I'm not saying how long that is, but it's a long time. And, and I was a student driver at Thousand Oaks High School, and every day when I come home from work and I go to work, we have student drivers making left turns from Moore Park into Flores and then into the parking lot. And you know what? Traffic gets really backed up there, and they're not really always so great at navigating where to go, and they obstruct the intersection already. If you put in a 7-Eleven, that's going to increase our traffic flow, it's going to be impossible for them to make that left turn to get into school. It's already backed up in the morning. It's, we need a longer left turn lane if you want to plan for something. We could plan for that, but I don't know, I, I don't think anyone's neighborhood has ever been improved by having a 7-Eleven in it. And I want you guys to improve our neighborhood. I'm sure you can come up with something good, and I'm sure the developer, if it wasn't just about the money, could come up with something good. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Wilson, then Bill Wilson, and Susan Sloot. If there's, if anybody does want to speak and they haven't filled out a speaker card, you're still able to do that and, and speak.
Hi, my name's Amy Wilson. I live at 566 Caiet Jasmine, so I am two houses down from the medical office building. I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I'm in and out and around all day, and I see all the comings and goings from the high school, the traffic and the chaos that can occur. I have to admit that this year hasn't been so bad, but in the 12 years I've lived there, we've had, this is the second year that wasn't so bad, and those, these years were preceded by two really horrendous years. So my understanding is that the high school has put on a campaign to try to help out the neighborhood, and usually there's a lot of police activity, and in response to that, we have a very light year, and this is one of those. But we're pretty used to some horrendous behavior from the high school kids. We have fights, loitering, skateboarding, maniac drivers, people trying to jump the dip in the street, a lot of smoking, and I mean, pot, cigarettes, vaping. And my understanding is that it was made very clear that they will sell cigarettes, which I do feel should be added to the deed restriction. I've had groups of kids sitting on the curb in front of my house, passing around a bong, smoking cigarettes, leaving the butts and trash behind. My next-door neighbor had to kick some kids out of his front yard who were filling their bong out of his hose. If we provide the kids a place to buy cigarettes, drinks, and snacks right on the corner, that's going to exacerbate this kind of activity. And I've already spent countless hours picking up trash in front of my house. I've also, as a result of calling the police, have had my house vandalized, so I'm pretty scared to call the police anymore about it, and with the way things are nowadays, sometimes they don't come. So let me just get to this really quickly. I went to the 7-Eleven on Wilbur on a random Sunday night at 9:00 p.m. There were at least a dozen people hanging out in front in large groups, loitering, talking, smoking cigarettes. There were panhandling, there was tons of dogs. And that 7-Eleven is well-lit, just as the one is proposed to be. This is not the type of behavior we should want to draw into our quiet rural, no sidewalks or streetlights with people riding horses down the street neighborhood. Thank you.
I live two doors down from the proposed gas station convenience store. 50 years ago, when they zoned at C1, like you said, there were about 20,000 people that were here. Now we've got 120,000 people, so C1 was probably a real good idea 50 years ago, but C1 now, it's still sitting there at C1. So, and that's, I mean, he doesn't meet the requirements of C1 anyways, but shouldn't be C1 at all, right across from Thousand Oaks High School. To prove the point, your planning commission back in 1980s went through a whole litany of proactive approaches to make sure the businesses right across the street, that one being the dairy that used to be there, got zoned C2. So they made sure all the congregating that the students did with the principal at the time at the TO high school there, plus the neighbors and the city planning, said C2 for sure, for any businesses that go in there. And now they want to put in, and it really is because of traffic, because of crime, and the congregation of the students. This business is exactly the same problem, same area, same, everything's the same, it just wasn't addressed in 1980, that they gave it the C2 distinction. So all those issues in 1980, no matter what the population size of the student body or the population in Thousand Oaks, it's increased dramatically over the last 20 years, since 1980, or 20, 30 years. Am I talking 30 years? 30 years now. So we've got a way bigger problem with congregation of students, way bigger problem. I, I back up to Moore, to Moore Park Road. We have rear-ending, I hear it, they run into my, to our back wall on Moore Park Road, rear-ending goes on all the time. Ooh, you hear, ooh, and you just bam, all right there. This, this is silly. What you're looking at on the television screen, this is- What you're looking at on the television screen, this is packed with cars, packed with cars right now. Right now, that's packed with cars, people trying to get around. This is completely, it's crazy. It's crazy. We're just talking about 8 o'clock, it's insane. They're all backed up. People come off of Moore Park here going 50 miles an hour, whip a U-turn into Jasmine, where I live. It's, there's no way with gas trucks and merchandising trucks and all that, that you should be there. So a convenience store, there's no way. It just can't be in there. A convenience store with all the students. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Now we have Susan Slote, then Erica Nicholson, and then Steve Nicholson.
Hi, I'm Susan Slote. I'm a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. I have one student at TO High School and one future Lancer, hopefully. My husband's lived on the Cali-Clavelle streets for 60, since 1965, and this was one of the first tracks in Thousand Oaks. There's no streetlights, no sidewalks, as other people have mentioned. I don't find the necessity for this gas station or convenience stores. There's, other people have mentioned as well, that there are three gas stations located within a half a mile of this location. One of them is the USA Gas Station, which is a 24-hour, that's right off the freeway, so why do we need another 24-hour gas station within a half a mile of this location? There's also three grocery stores, two drugstores, two dollar stores, all within a half a mile as well. The 7-Eleven, I don't feel will improve the quality of life for our neighborhood or the school. I don't know about you, but I don't necessarily go, oh, I'm going to 7-Eleven to go get my fresh fruit, when I have Trader Joe's and Vons and all other choices that are right there. The wall that developer has shown in the pictures is a big concern for me. It's going to impair the visibility when you're trying to come out of Cali-Jasmine onto Flores, as well as the vagrants and the teens that'll have a place to hide now behind there, outside of their lights and all these gazillions of security cameras. Why do you need all these security cameras? Thirty-two security cameras for one tiny location? That, to me, tells me that they think that there's going to be a problem. The safety, on the staffing report on page six, the safety of the teens walking to and from school, going through that driveway that's now going to be an exit from the gas station, is a big concern when there's more than hundreds, hundreds of students that walk through there. Our daughter already is not really comfortable walking to school because of the people that hang out there, but when you add homeless people that tend to hang out with these sort of establishments, the 24-hours and the 7-Elevens, and some of the parents are going to end up using this as a drive-through drop-off for, you know, getting their kids to school. The 24-hour in a residential location is not welcome nor should be allowed, in my opinion. The Vons Shopping Center at 1790 Moore Park is a half a mile from this location and is considered a residential neighborhood, so why wouldn't we be considered residential neighborhood when we're this close, when it's all houses surrounding this corner? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Erica Nicholson, followed by Steve Nicholson, and then Masid Kamal.
Hi, Erica Nicholson. I'm four, four doors down on Cuyahoga Jasmine from the proposed project. I did read Mr. Kern's report. It's very thorough. Thank you for that, and I do believe that the restriction, the time restriction on the strip mall in the office building is actually 9:00 PM, and with the exception of the Domino's that delivers without customers coming in. So I would propose that a 9:00 PM restriction be equally imposed on this project. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our neighborhood. It's very quiet and very peaceful. I've lived there for four years. It's all single-family residential on both sides of Moore Park Road, hundreds and hundreds of single-family homes. Our neighbors have horses. We have neighbors that walk their goats at night, like their dogs. We have chickens at our house, just four doors down, and we really enjoy the peaceful country atmosphere there, and just feel very badly that 7-Eleven is the wrong fit for this neighborhood. There's been a lot of changes in the city over the past three or four years, I would say, with homeless problems and panhandling at other shopping centers, and this is probably, aside from all the other things that we've heard, is probably my fear that this type of project is going to draw in those types of, it's going to be attractive to those types of people in our community. And we do have people, homeless people sleeping in our Waverly Equestrian Park and at the other park down the street from the high school, I believe it's called the Thousand Oaks Community Park. And I feel like this is going to draw those people in, and it's really, it's kind of scary to think that's going to be right around the corner from my home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Steve Nicholson, followed by Masid Kamal, and then Jeffrey Vascerro.
Hi, my name is Steve Nicholson, and I live at 586 Cuyahoga Jasmine. I've worked in commercial real estate since 1995. I'm a certified commercial investment member. I'm a real estate broker, and I currently work for a commercial lending, lender, managing and selling commercial REOs nationwide. I'd like to thank the planning commission for a very thorough report outlining the many reasons to deny the application submitted by Magdal. My greatest concern with the proposed 24-hour gas station and convenience store is the negative impact on the valuations of the homes surrounding the site. The following paragraph is taken from the HUD Handbook 4001, page 491. Stationary Storage Tanks. If the subject property line is located within 300 feet of an above-ground or subsurface stationary storage tank with a capacity of 1,000 gallons or more of flammable or explosive material, then the property is ineligible for FHA insurance. This includes domestic and commercial uses, as well as automotive service station tanks. Underground tanks for gas stations are usually 12,000 to 15,000 gallons, so that's definitely within that range. Residents within 300 feet will have a much smaller pool of buyers when they try to sell their homes. Buyers can qualify for an FHA loan with a lower credit score, and an FHA insured loan requires a much lower down payment. A conventional loan requires up to 20% down, while an FHA loan only requires 3.5%. What this means is, selling a home within 300 feet of this project, it will be much more difficult for those sellers. You're going to have to find somebody who's going to pay cash or a conventional loan. A vehicle concern is the unavoidable increase in crimes that will plague the residential neighborhoods surrounding the site. In my experience with the properties that I manage, a 24-hour convenience store always attracts a certain unwanted element. Homeless and vagrants will be attracted to this type of business. Many of these people have drug habits, and they have to fund these habits. You're going to see an increase in property theft, car break-ins, panhandling, vandalism, and loitering.
Please wrap it up.
The developer told residents at its last community outreach meeting that there will be a much greater police presence in our neighborhoods, and that we should feel safer. Well, I think he's correct. We will see a bigger presence, but it's because we're going to have a lot more crime in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Majid Kamal, and my family and I live at 616 East Avenue of Las Flores. That is the property that is most impacted with this proposed project. And we have many, many concerns, but the three that I will be speaking of is, the first one is traffic. A lot of the folks already talked about the impact that it's going to have, and I want to read something off of the first page of the staff report on the environmental review that says the project would not result in any significant effect relating to traffic or noise. But as Mr. Kern said, that they said the exact same thing for the Starbucks at Rancho and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so I'll put no value on this statement that there isn't, there's not going to be any effect. There will be effect, and just, as you can look at this picture, put yourself in place of a truck driver who's delivering stuff to this 7-Eleven, or the guy who's delivering gas, trying to come out of that driveway. The only legal turn is a right turn. Where is it going to go? There's nowhere, there's nowhere for him to go, and if he or she's making, more than likely is going to make a left turn, which is illegal. A lot of the accidents happen there because people making illegal turns, and we hear accidents all the time. And lastly, on my point, the architect mentioned that he's putting up, he's proposing to put up a lot of lights. Thank you for, very much for that. My bedrooms are facing those, that property, and my wife and my kids have migraine, so no, thank you. Appreciate your efforts. So please, this is a bad idea. Please don't, don't let this go through. This is not good. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Jeffrey Vascerro. I'm so sorry if I'm...
Vascerca.
Randy Wagner, and then Denise Edwards.
Hi, my name's Jeff Vascerca, and I live at 680 Cuyahoga Tulipan in Thousand Oaks. And I moved here from Encino to raise my family, which I had one daughter, and then I had my second daughter. And a lot, everyone here has basically said the same thing. We're a small community, we all believe in each other, and we all like really love the community aspects of raising children, you know, having propriety of different venues that we can go and do things. I mean, one of my favorite things is take my girls to a donut walk down the street right where TO is. There's a great donut shop that I bring my daughters, and I see all these kids from the high schools to the middle schools, all frequenting there. There's a pandaria right down at the 99 cent store, right down the street from my house, and we love to go there, and we experience all these different people. Now, if you bring a 7-Eleven in, it's not going to bring that same commodity, that same family value, that same work ethic that we've all raised and been brought up with. I mean, I worked at a White Hen back when I was a teenager, and I saw this stuff, and I worked the late-night shift. I mean, I worked from 11 o'clock to 8:00 in the morning, and this was back in the 90s. This is in today, where you have so many more different things going on and people not being able to understand what the situations and those things are. And you know what? I mean, I got to say, this neighborhood, the things that the police do, that the firefighters have done, everyone else has done, has been to make us safer, to make us feel proud, to make us all want to be a caring society. And I think the fact that it's $4 million is the main reason why they want to open a 7-Eleven. It has nothing to do with the fact that it's going to bring value, that it's going to bring 30% healthy food, which is not even a chance that that's going to happen. They're going to absolutely want to bring tobacco, and they're absolutely going to cause a complete nightmare of traffic that has already been there with gas tanks and whatnot. We already rebated the fact that there was bad tanks before, and now we're going to have even bigger tanks with bigger situations to deal with. The environment's the most important part, our children are the most important part, and we, as a, as a community, should figure out a different way to put something in there that can get those students to either work or actually have a situation where they could be a benefit to Thousand Oaks. And I think opening a store that only allows one to two people to possibly be working there, isn't that situation. So therefore, I would say, deny the fact that they have a 7-Eleven there, and I can't thank Mr. Kern enough for stating that with the staff in the situation. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Denise Edwards, and then Justin Cox. Did I, did I skip Randy Wagner? I'm so sorry.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Randy Wagner. I live at 1981 Rutgers Drive, which is in the neighborhood just south of this proposed development. I'm here with my wife tonight to ask you to deny this application for several reasons. A 24-hour operation of a 7-Eleven does not fit into this residential neighborhood because of the nighttime noise pollution and ambient light pollution coming from such a business. Second reason is traffic, especially in the morning when parents are taking their kids to school at TO High School. Going northbound on Moore Park Road, you're supposed to pull into the school lot, take a left turn there, drop your students off in front of the office, then exit back onto Moore Park Road, heading south. But if a station opens here, I'm concerned that bad behavior will happen, as I am guilty of, for eight years, while my kid was going to TO High School. I would drop them off by pulling into the gas station, the mobile station that was there. Kids would jump out of the car, and then I would exit onto Flores, turn right, and head back down through the neighborhood. There were hundreds, hundreds of parents doing the same thing, constant stream of cars through there, and they didn't stop to buy Slurpees or hot dogs. My main reason for opposing this is for the health of the kids. I understand there is a state ordinance that bans sale of alcohol and tobacco products within 600 feet of a school, which this development would fall within. I'm sorry, I can't quote the, that ordinance, but I will look it up and send it to you. That ordinance does allow a waiver granted by the planning commission if they appeal it, and my concern is that even though Magdal agrees to it now, when he finds out a couple years from now that the profits aren't sustainable because he's not allowed to sell alcohol or tobacco, that he will appeal, and it may be granted. I ask if you do approve this project, that you put in a permanent, non-cancellable ban against alcohol, tobacco, and vaping products too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Denise Edwards, and then Justin Cox.
Good evening. I'm a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks.
I'm sorry, would you mind stating your name and city of residence?
Denise Edwards.
City of residence?
Yeah, a resident, yeah, a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks, and I want to just ask that the commissioners, if you haven't already, I drive up and down Moore Park, maybe anywhere from two to four times a day, a week, each, each day of the week, and starting out like around 8:00 in the morning. And the traffic there, by Thousand Oaks, I'm going south, the traffic at the high school, the parents are coming in and then trying to get back out after they've dropped off their children. It is immense. It is really immense, so it's a big tie-up. And also, on, on Moore Park Road, when you're turning left and you want to get into any one, the only way you can get into those places, establishment, the little strip mall there where they have the pizza and the nail salon, et cetera, you have to make a left-hand turn onto Las Flores. You can make a U-turn, but it's very iffy, depending upon. So then you have to make a left-hand turn and come on down to whatever that street is, and come in from the alley into there. So that's, that's another complication, but I'd like to ask, invite all the commissioners, if you haven't already, just come by at 8:00 in the morning on Moore Park Road, and just, just take a look at that. The 7-Eleven, I have no idea why we would even, even consider such a place there in that location. I came from the valley, I watched what happened in the valley, and 7-Eleven would be fine in a place where there's a lot of fast-food places, very, a lot of business, type, that type of business. There is a place for them, but not in the middle of the community where all the people are living. Also, something I wanted to add to the homeowners right around there, I live up on, up above Moore Park going north, just the other side of Olson Road, but the homeowners that are living near there, I understand their homeowner's insurance will also go up, because it's going to change everything, there's no doubt about that. So I would ask you to consider very deeply, and I hope that the 7-Eleven will find a place that will work well with the type of business that they run. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alan Smith? Is Alan Smith here? Okay, and then after that, Lori Jacobs.
My name is Alan Smith. My wife and I live at 832 Cuyahoga Clavelle, Thousand Oaks. We've heard a lot about the potential for crime or additional crime in our neighborhood with the building of this facility. For us, it's personal. When the first gas station was still in operation, our son was a student at TO High School at that time, when he was walking home one day, and was attacked by five gentlemen and beaten in the parking lot of the gas station. So we're very concerned about having a situation that would possibly create a, that kind of an atmosphere, certainly with... that would possibly create a, that kind of an atmosphere, certainly with a 24-hour convenience store, gas station. We think that the possibility for situations like this could occur again. We've talked and we've heard a lot about the traffic. There's no doubt about traffic is going to be an absolute nightmare if this, this facility is built. But I'd like to also mention that the, the parking on Cuyahoga Jasmine right now is already hard because there's quite a bit of illegal parking that goes on every day, even though there was signs posted, I think, two or three years ago, providing for only two to three hours of parking from seven to three. Several of the signs were tore down immediately, but you can go by there almost every day. And those, in the street, Cuyahoga Jasmine is, is quite full with student cars and other cars that are parked there illegally. Some days, it even spills up into Cuyahoga Clavel. While we've talked a lot about the impact with the high school, I'd also like to mention that we have another school, the Cano Valley Adult High School was added to our community two years ago on Montgomery. So, we have hundreds of cars going in from eight o'clock in the morning until nine o'clock at night. I can see a lot of those cars coming right down Cuyahoga Jasmine to the 7-Eleven for gas or for whatever else if this is built. So, I hope that we do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Jacobs and then Timothy Corbett.
Hi, I'm Lori Jacobs. Am I using this thing right?
She's doing great.
I have lived in Thousand Oaks for 24 years. I live about a mile and a half from this project, so it's not really going to directly affect my home. But I think, I'm sitting here going, what are you thinking? This is Thousand Oaks where you are very careful with your 24-hour businesses. There isn't even a pharmacy where I could get meds for my kids when they were sick in the middle of the night. I had to drive out to Ventura. I'm not anti-growth. I'm excited about the new project for Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which is our downtown, where growth is very much appropriate. I understand the need for affordable housing to attract younger families into our community. But how many of you would really appreciate a 24-hour 7-Eleven within shouting distance of the bedroom windows of the homes you have worked your butt off all your life to pay for? I don't think any of you would want that in your backyards. It's not compatible with people's private homes. Simple as that. It belongs somewhere along Thousand Oaks Boulevard or where there is a significant amount of business already. I'd like the people to stop referring to it as a service station. One thing, I went to one of the community meetings with Magdal and one of the things that they worked really hard to sell us on was how pretty they were going to make it and to compare it to the old gas station, which of course was old in the images that they looked at. How many of you have, we've all driven by 7-Elevens, we've all been to 7-Elevens. How many of you have seen a 20-year-old 7-Eleven that has beautified the neighborhood and brought it up? Because that's not something I have ever seen. 7-Elevens in general are an urban blight. It is primarily a market. Magdal told us, oh, nobody can really make money anymore on just a gas station. We need the market. They're focused on that 7-Eleven. The gas is just extra. So, my question also is, we have multiple established gas stations within a mile of that who are trying to make it as a gas station with a tiny little mark, not something that's bringing in a lot of revenue for them. Will any of our established businesses be pushed out of business and lose money because of the presence of the, the draw of the 7-Eleven market? I don't think that's fair to do to our existing business people that have been with our community for a long period of time. None of their commitments as far as tobacco and alcohol or the cameras are in any way binding for the long term. So, who knows what will happen? Obviously, 7-Eleven is a profit business. That is their goal. That's supposed to be their goal. Your global goal is supposed to be the betterment of our community and I hope you'll really take that into consideration when you make this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And unless there's somebody else who's going to fill out a speaker card, we have Timothy Corbett and that's that.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Corbett. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I've heard a lot of things tonight about traffic, security, children, smoking, drugs, devaluation of property value, insurance concerns because of a gas station being so close to your house. My big concern is, and maybe Mr. Parker, you can answer this, who has the all-clear on the decontamination for that facility and that site? Is it done? I know it took about 13 years to get it done since the mobile station was there. I also noticed that the medical building that was built just south of it by the developer wasn't rented and nobody occupied it until they got the all-clear from that property. So, if it took 13 or some odd years to decontaminate that site, why would you want to put a gas station back in there and contaminate it again? I just, I don't get it. I really don't get it. So, does anybody have that information for us tonight? Can anybody answer that question? Who has the all-clear on that? And, and when the site was being decontaminated, it wasn't enveloped? It was 500 feet from a high school? Where did all those fumes and vapors go? I have questions. We all should have questions. And, but I'm not hearing any answers. So, that's my big concern. Why would, why would you create a problem and a situation that took you 13 years to clear up? I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to staff for follow-up comments.
Thank you, Chair McMahon. A few points I'd like to clarify and or respond to made by the speakers. First, Mr. Scribner's comment about the service station roofing materials. As we do with any recommendation for denial, we prepare draft conditions of approval for the applicant to review in case the planning commission decides to approve it. A condition on that approval would have been number 31, which does state that the roof material should match or be complementary to adjacent businesses. And that's incomparable in color as well. In this case, as Mr. Scribner mentioned, metal roofs are allowed by the city's architectural design guidelines contingent on them being comparable to the area. This is not an eclectic area. There's very few commercial buildings with limited roofing designs and styles. That's why staff took the position of requiring or recommending requiring a concrete tile or slate roof comparable to what's in the area. Going back, a point of clarification on the, the locations, the 24-hour uses and those within 200 feet, these, these hours, the 24-hour uses and those locations within 200 feet were approved prior to the 2000 or the 1972 service station design guidelines. And as Ms. Sosa and Ms. Matt commented on, attached to the staff report, attachment number 14 is a letter from the school district, which does discuss their, their recommendations on the project, one of which is a bullet point that requests that the planning commission prohibit the sale of tobacco and vaping, vaping materials. In regard to the lot size, last week, we received the record, topographic survey from the applicant. That plan does have a stamp on it, but it's not signed by an engineer. That is not a record survey. That's not a boundary survey. So, the only record that we have for lot size is what we have on the assessment office information, the city's information, what was submitted on the site plan, the original site plan, do base our lot size of 19,943 square feet. And regarding the remedial work, the contamination, attachment number five in your staff report is a certification from the County of Ventura Resource Management Agency asserting that the lot has been, all contaminants have been removed from the site. And this concludes my comments.
Before we continue, I know we have questions, but I must have made some sort of a mistake. It's been brought to my attention that John McLaughlin had filled out a speaker card and I must have missed it and I apologize.
Good evening. My name is John McLaughlin. I live in Cuyahoga Clavel. I'm strongly opposed to this development. I've lived in this area for just over a year. I also work in real estate. When I'm driving clients around, no one ever says to me, I want to live next to a gas station. Anyone living in this area is going to have trouble selling their property as soon as this development is built. One of the main concerns is noise, traffic, that traffic section, which has been commented many times from people here, is a hotspot for accidents. There's also a bus stop on that corner. I'm not sure what's going to happen with that bus stop. When there's a gas delivery, there's no visual area there where people coming down from the street can see around the corner. There's going to be problems with kids hanging out in that area. One of the targets for this development is the kids from the school. Why the kids from the school? Because they're going to be buying products there. The developer hasn't really been prepared in his answers and saying whether he's definitely not going to sell alcohol, tobacco, or vapes. And also, not prepared whether he's going to say, if he's not going to open 24 hours, that's one of the big things that's a concern for the people living here. I've got a six-year-old daughter. I regularly walk the, around that area. As soon as we've got a development like that, it's going to be unsafe for my daughter to be walking around there. 24 hours is not really required in this area. We've got gas stations. We've already been told there's 20 gas stations in the area. Tobacco, 24 hours is the big things that I am strongly opposed to. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, I apologize. Staff, were there any other comments you want to make?
I was gonna, Kathy, now, I'm in Public Works in Traffic. I was going to address the numerous traffic-related questions that came up. And the first one is addressing the traffic impacts at the intersection, that in the staff report said there was not going to be a significant impact to trap, based on traffic. And what's important to understand, we look at what is significant and we look at intersection impacts. And the morning and evening level service is a level service A in the morning, a level service B in the evening. And that's how the intersection operates during the morning commute time and the PM commute time. That's not to say that for 19 minutes in the morning, it's exactly as everyone was describing it. And it's very much like that at all our schools. But that being said, the number of trips that then would be generated from this project, what we look at, and we, we use national rates to determine the number of trips coming from a convenient market with pumps. And it's, and the national rates are very clear, exactly what the public's heard too. It's the convenient market that generates the trips. The, the pumps are somewhat secondary, unless you have a, a lot of pumps. But in this case, that's, there's very few pumps. So, there's a number of trips that are generated by the convenience store. But what's important is that there's a factor called the passerby factor. It's the number of people that on their way home would just stop and get lottery tickets or just stop. They, they, it's not a new trip generated through the intersection. It's, they were passing by and they, they then stop at the, at a convenience store or get gas. Just gas stations generate a 75% passerby factor. Just convenience stores are 40%. A convenience store with gas stations is 60. So, you take the number of trips that are generated by this use and you actually reduce it by 60%. That being, so you can see, it's not really impacting the intersection. It's already impacting at a very good level of service. What you don't do, all those trips are still going back and forth over the driveway. In this case, there's one, we call it restricted access. It's a right and right out on Moore Park. And then there's the full access that the majority of people probably would be using coming out of Cuyahoga Jasmine because it's much easier, once you come into the site, to come out at that site. And that's also where all the students cross over, not all of them, majority of them, to get to the school. And we have a count of about 200 to 300 students a day, use the intersection. So, that's, they're all not walking on that one side of the street, but they will be crossing over the driveway during the time when trips are going in and out of the driveway. Because again, they're not passerby trips. Those are at the intersection, but everyone, every trip generated by this convenience store are using the driveways. So, I just wanted to clarify, that's how we look at what is that significant from a traffic engineering standpoint at the intersection. It's not lowering the level of service to a significant level that they would have to mitigate the impact. But it's important to understand that there are impacts to pedestrians who currently have no, no friction going across the street. And also, the, the bus stop is not proposed to be changed at this time. A bus stop, it could be changed, but right now, it's on the, as you say, the west side of the driveway and it still would be there. And the bus comes throughout the day and a lot of students should, use it during the, to get to and from school. But it would stay at that location during the day as well. And we also wouldn't want to move it any further east because then it would directly impact single-family homes. So, there's really not a lot of wiggle room right now to where we would, could move the bus stop. I wanted to address accidents. We look at accident rates in the city and that is determined by the number of accidents faces, the volume of traffic at the intersection. Based on our 70 intersections that we track the accident rates right now, this is ranked 20th, this intersection. This past year, half the accidents were rear-end accidents, but they were on Moore Park Road. And these are reported accidents. That's not to say the residents don't hear a lot of accidents, but those are also the ones that are reported. They're also reported at the intersections. So, if there's accidents happen outside of the intersections, I wasn't, we, we were looking at intersections compared to other intersections. Oh, I did want to, it was a very good point, the concern about site distance as you come out of Cuyahoga Jasmine. We'll look very closely. The site plan shows there's going to be trees. They're showing a sign. They have to get a special permit for the sign to really make sure as somebody's coming out of Cuyahoga Jasmine, they look left. Currently, there's a fence there, which I would think the fence actually doesn't help site distance currently. But we'll make sure as much as we can possible that when you pull up to the intersection, you look, you can, look left, you can see down the street. But we, we understand, we can't clear out the entire site so somebody can see diagonally across from the intersection. But we'll make sure we take a special, hard look at making sure the site distance is as good as possible. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I think staff, excuse me, questions of staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Now, for the statistics. Following up on a couple of things on that, you mentioned that this intersection currently ranks 20th in the city in terms of accidents.
Correct.
Do you have any sense or any projection on whether this application, if approved, would materially change that ranking, either up or down or stay at the same?
It, I would, it would have to be substantially some big change that happens at the intersection. Again, the, the accidents at this intersection this past year were on Friday and Saturday nights. That's not the peak hour for this use. So, I don't, I don't see that really changing that.
Does, does staff anticipate a, a significant change in traffic as a result of the application that would cause a, a change in the accident rate at this corner?
Again, you're using the word significant. So, no, it would not be significant.
Okay. One of the speakers also mentioned that parking was a problem in this area. So, same question. As a result of this application, does staff expect a material change, making things worse, staying about the same, making things better with regard to the parking situation?
As mentioned, and I've been out to the site many times, there is, there's restricted parking along Cuyahoga Jasmine. It's a two-hour parking during the school hours. And there, people are parked there. So, it could be an enforcement issue right now that it's not being enforced. I personally didn't get the impression these were school stu, they were student cars. I think it was kind of a mix of cars. Around Thousand Oaks High School on the other side of Moore Park Road has permit parking. Permit parking, if requested by the community, the neighbors, it could be moved to this area. So, I don't see there really being a parking issue because there's cars already parked there. Honestly, though, there could be parents, like one of the parents already mentioned, they, parents park in shopping centers while they wait for their kids. They do it all over the city. So, that might be a, a use the 7-Eleven might not be happy with because nobody can get into the 7-Eleven because you have nine parents parking, waiting for their kids to come to their car. So, that could be the impact.
Right. But that's on the, that's on the applicant's property.
That's on the site. Right. But I don't, I don't think Cuyahoga Jasmine will be affected by parking by this 7-Eleven.
Okay. So, maybe not zero impact, but not really a material change in the parking situation?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kearns, I wanted to follow up on an- Mr. Kearns, I wanted to follow up on an assertion that Mr. Scribner made. He said that other projects had gotten setback relief. Are there other projects in this area, or can you elaborate on that?
Actually, the medical office building just to the south did get a setback waiver for the front, that was intended to move the building away from the residential area, so the setback was on the Moore Park roadside.
Right.
Which required 20 feet, and they went down to just a few feet.
So, we're talking about the setback from the center line of Kaia Jasmine? To move it more toward Moore Park?
Yes, the setback waiver was actually on the Moore Park roadside, the Moore Park Road property line.
I see, okay.
In that instance, at least.
Okay, so there is a, there is a setback waiver that was granted for an adjacent property in this case?
There was, and as we mentioned earlier, any development on this site is going to require a waiver, it's just that where that waiver's granted is what we need to look at.
Right, and that's, that's the 40 feet instead of 100 feet off of the center line of Kaia Jasmine.
What's being requested in this case is 40 feet from the center line of Kaia Jasmine, yes.
All right, thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll go. Thank you very much. First question, the 20th ranking, 20th out of 70, is that 20th most frequent accidents or least frequent accidents? I'm not clear on that.
It's a rate, so it's the, it has the highest accident rate at a 70th, it's ranked 20th.
So, number one is bad?
Yes, it would have the most cars for traffic.
I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you. The other question I had is, so, and I wasn't clear on that before, on the 24-hour variances allowed, that rule was changed back in 72? Or that was the last time that those were granted? And so, all the businesses that are operating 24 hours now, were given those exceptions back prior to 1972, is that correct?
Yeah, several of those were actually approved under county jurisdiction before the city incorporated.
Okay.
And then several others were approved under a 1969 resolution, which did not have any hour of operation discussion.
Okay.
There were hours of operation discussions in the 1967 resolution, there were again the 1970, and then in the 72 iteration, but not in that 69. So, it was a window period where some were approved without a limitation on the hours, but the current version does have a limitation of 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM for uses within 200 feet of a residential area.
Perfect, and as was pointed out to me, Ed Jones signed that 1972 document, so, thank you.
Nothing, okay, let's see. If there are no more questions of staff, no more? Okay, then we'll go back to the applicant and his team. You do have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, and thank you to the public as well. I know this feels adversarial, and that's unfortunate, because we really are trying to actually create a beautiful project here. Ironically, we're just trying to implement what was there before. I guess if I could give the public an analogy to the residential concerns, if you got mold in your house, and God forbid, had to tear the whole thing down...
Excuse me, um...
Oh.
Please address us.
Yes, perfect.
Thank you.
Commissioner, it's, so, we're just, there was obviously, you know, an unfortunate spill and contamination, and all we're doing is replacing what was there, except we're modifying it to, instead of having a noisy, loud, and unhealthy lube shop, it's instead going to be a fresh, fair 7-Eleven concept. I've given the Commissioners that binder, which shows the great length 7-Eleven has been willing to take as far as fresh food is concerned. This is not your grandmother's 7-Eleven, this is not just, you know, candy and snacks, this has fresh burritos, fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, crudités, string cheese, a bunch, a host of yogurts, and you'll see some of, I mean, literally has, you know, a whole chicken sandwich and chicken salad and Caesar salads. I mean, this is not your normal 7-Eleven. I think some of the public has a misperception based on what historically 7-Eleven has looked like, but this is completely different. I also want to note, on the traffic side of things, you know, we have definitely, I spoke with Kathy a couple different times, because we wanted to address what we heard in the neighborhood meetings, which was this traffic concern, but they also indicated to me, what they've indicated to you is we didn't even need to have a traffic study, because it wasn't considered to be significant. So, I know some of the public has said they fear that more accidents could happen, there are going to be more cars on the site, that is true, I mean, like I said, it's been 13 years as a grass patch, so there has to be more cars in any kind of development, in anything that happens. And as far as the support is concerned, you're, I don't think going to get, you know, a project ever that every single person buys into and wants. I think we and our team has done a great job to address the Thousand Oaks High School, which really was the most sensitive use. We got the principals, both of them, to agree and advocate on our behalf. The Conejo Valley School District, one of the public comments was they're opposing it, they absolutely aren't. I've submitted the two-page paper that also was on the Ventura Star, they proposed some conditions on us that we are meeting, as far as the direct line feed for security to TOPD, as far as fresh food options, as far as a number of things, we are answering the letter to that call. As far as lighting, I heard a lot of concerns about it bleeding. We have really worked hard to address their concerns on that Kaia Jasmine side. There's currently, as it is, a curb cut, and in that binder, we have gone through three or four different retail iterations, and came up based on feedback to actually close that curb cut. So, instead of that curb cut that goes directly into Kaia Jasmine, we now have it completely blocked off. We're putting a big wall with sound buffering, huge above-code maturity, both in size and in height, trees to block out the light. The way our photometrics are designed and will be implemented, you're going to have it just be directional where it needs to be. It doesn't benefit us, and we don't want to be a nuisance. I mean, we are trying really hard to hear everybody's concerns and strike a fair balance, because of course, you need lights to make sure there's no homeless, there's no criminal element, but you don't want too much, so that obviously the neighbors are affected. So, it's a careful balancing act, and I think, I just want to commit the Commissioners to knowing, we have worked for two years to try to rally the stakeholders as best we can. You know, from a land use perspective, we are allowed by right to have a convenience market. I hear a lot of the public comment saying they shouldn't be allowed to have a market, but in a C1 zone, it literally is legally a permissive use by right. We wouldn't need to come to you to just put a convenience market. The only reason we need to come to you is for this gas component that not a lot of people really have taken exception to at all. And actually, that discretionary gas permit is important for the safety, because you don't want too big a parking lot, because then that can be a gathering spot, or a dark place on a site. So, a lot of this is, you know, push and pull, and we can't obviously gain everybody's support, but I can tell you of any of the things we've looked into putting here, like I said, two-story office, community didn't want that, we tried Starbucks, they didn't want that, we tried a Hawaiian Ono, which was just a restaurant, they didn't want that. This is the only one we've got to actually...
Thank you. It's time. Okay, you had five minutes, but stay there, there may be some questions.
Sure.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, just following up on the convenience store, gas station split, I think if I heard you right, you just said, "We're just trying to build what was there before." This doesn't have any impact at all, we don't ever weigh economic feasibility, that's your department?
Sure.
But I'm wondering if you're able to say, just for public information, what your projections are, what's the revenue split percentage-wise of convenience store versus fuel sales?
Sure, I'm happy to share that. I think, you know, our estimates on the convenience side is about a million two of annual sales, and we expect the gas sales to be about that, so almost a 50-50 split.
50-50, I wasn't even asking for specific figures, just percentage-wise.
Yeah, it's about 50-50.
About even.
Exactly, and also for, I guess, the community to understand, I mean, this property that has been delinquent for 13 years, now is going to be able to have $2.5 to $3 million in sales. That means $250 to $300,000 of sales tax annually.
Okay, that's, that's not our department.
Sorry.
Thank you, though.
Yes.
But about a 50-50 split. And I wonder if you've done any long-term thinking in terms of the inevitable reduction in fuel revenue as more electric vehicles are on the road? What are your plans to, to make up the shortfall in fossil-fuel-based sales?
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question, because it's a hot topic, because obviously, Tesla and the electric cars are coming fast and proliferating quicker probably than anybody thought. And I think the long-term 7-Eleven plan and strategy will be to convert those gas pumps to electric charging stations, which will be less noisy, I guess, or less, you know, sensitive, I guess, on the smell, even though we actually don't acknowledge, because, you know, the gas is actually pretty responsibly delivered these days, it's different from back then where you actually showed up to a gas station, smelt the fuel, so, but yes, over the long term, we do expect to see the actual gas pumps shift to electric chargers.
Okay, would that, again, just in terms of projections, percentage, and I'm not looking for specific figures, you don't need to share your financials with us, I'm just wondering, would that mean over the long term that your food sales would become a bigger part of the pie, and that the fuel or electric or whatever would be smaller? Or do you, do you expect it to continue with that 50-50 split?
I anticipate it, because I think the public, you know, correctly noted that there are less and less gas stations, so I think, you know, the more that happens too, it's going to help out what existing inventory there is, because I don't think the market will be able to serve as many. So, I think that is one part of your answer, but the second part of your answer is, I do anticipate the convenience sales to be higher one day than gas prices, but...
All right, that's what I'm getting at, is over time, you expect the convenience store aspect of the application to be more important economically over time?
I do, and interestingly, that is the by-right use.
All right, great.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners? Okay.
Hi. In the event this is not going to be approved, whatever, what would the other use of the property be? Is there any other designs or ideas?
No, I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner, because the plan right now, if, God forbid, this doesn't prevail tonight, is to just go with a by-right development, which will be a convenience market at that corner, and it'll have an oversized parking lot. And I know, you know, I'm here advocating for this project and the details around it, I think, but it's for actually good reason, we're trying to beautify this corner, we're trying to make it the best possible version of this development. The by-right use is just a box and an oversized parking lot. And an oversized parking lot can, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud now, can become nuisance that some of the public is fearing, because it'll have, you know, empty car spaces that maybe can have congregation. I know by code also, we are allowed to have four tables with five seats around each one of them by right. Obviously, we would probably revert to that, which could become a hanging-out problem. So, you know, I think in approaching this whole development the entire time, the length of the two years, you know, we had been trying to pursue discretionary items, not just, you know, for, for the profit base of it, it's for purpose, for safety concerns, so that there's gas instead of an empty parking lot, so kids don't want to hang out. You know, it's, you know, having a better aesthetic look with the stonework, because with the gas, you know, and the sales accordingly, you can have a higher construction budget. So, the by-right case here is not, I think, compelling, and I don't think it's flattering to the community. And ironically, I think some public, you know, members don't understand that it is a by-right use there, so there will be a 7-Eleven there, we're just discussing kind of the parameters that we all think and, or should agree on it being there.
So, another question, so, I want to make sure it's clear, so, are you acceptable the idea that to the extent this commission does not approve the concept by virtue of the fact we can't get a definitive idea if tobacco's going to be sold?
Yeah.
You would not have asked for a continuance to make sure you got that, that information from 7-Eleven guaranteed, are you okay with that going forward?
So, so basically, what I'm okay saying, and this is, you know, I'll say to the public as well, we will deed restrict this property to not sell beer and alcohol or any liquor of any kind forever. We will also deed restrict this property, so we will not be able to sell vape pens or anything vape-related also forever. As far as the cigarette sales, I just, I know, I just don't know, I mean, 7-Eleven has their business model, and I think that has been deemed sufficiently, you know, important, not, and I want to highlight also, you have to be 21 to buy cigarettes. So, you know, high school kids, I know, you know, there's fake IDs, I get it, I had one when I was younger too, but 7-Eleven has some really sophisticated technology.
There's a police officer behind you, you may not want to admit that.
So, so, but, you know, cigarettes, I understand it's, you know, an important concern, but I mean, from my experience, kids are not smoking cigarettes or smoking vapes.
I understand, I want to make sure you understand, once we actually vote on the process, you can't ask for a continuance at that point, to get the information from 7-Eleven. Is that, is that agreeable?
I do understand that, Commissioner.
Nothing further.
And also, Commissioner, I'm not saying we will actually sell them, I just don't want to be lying to you and say, "I categorically can tell you we won't," right? So, I just don't know categorically.
You're just not prepared then to agree to a deed restriction, because you need to get the information from 7-Eleven, I got that, but it's part of the consideration of the process, and I just want to make sure you don't, after the fact, if that's how it goes, say, "Hey, let's continue this and I'll get 7-Eleven's approval." I just want to say, that would have to happen before we actually took a vote.
Right. I know they're not willing to say they will, you know, you know, not sell them, so I guess that's something we're going to have to live with. But they are deed restricting it to beer and wine and to vape, and their cigarette policy is ironclad. I mean, they have these swipers, they have, you know, trained franchisees, and these are also things that the city with an SUP can actually control. You can pull this, you know, the by-right development that I was telling could potentially become the default, almost renders the governmental agencies a little bit less controlling of some of these nuisance factors. I mean, an SUP by its very nature can be pulled. It's like, if 7-Eleven's not doing a good job, if there is the fears, you know, materializing that the public has stated and articulately done so, then I'm all for it, take the SUP away. I mean, I'm even trying to sign us up for a six-month trial period where, look, give us a shot.
No, I understand, is 7-Eleven going to have an ATM in the, in the building?
Yes, there is a Citibank ATM.
Citibank. Any other consignment, any other services that are being provided that aren't under 7-Eleven's control?
No, there are, there is a small section that sometimes offers gift cards, so you can buy an Uber card or an Apple merchandise card, I mean, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to flip through the pictures, but this really is not, you know, just candy, this is like...
You mean the book you gave us?
Yeah, the voluminous book you all have? Sorry, I'm a little...
Haven't looked at the thousand signatures either, by the way.
Exactly.
Had a chance to look through them.
It's a little OCD gone wrong. But, Commissioner, so, it's really acting like a small grocery store, I mean, it isn't, like I said, the grandmother's 7-Eleven, where it's just Haribo gummy bears and Slurpees, I mean, this is a well-balanced merchandise store. 7-Eleven has every incentive to make this merchandising be suitable and catering to the high school, right? I mean, they want to provide, you know, the kind of things that high school students should be buying, fresh foods, and also for the community, you've got a full section of mucinex, Advil, I mean, kind of things that you potentially, you know, will need if you're a resident as well.
It's amazing you know that I'm having sinus problems, so thank you for that.
Yes, you and I both.
I have nothing further.
But ironically, even though the public...
Thank you. I think, I think you've answered the question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, we're trying to be efficient here.
Yes.
Commissioner, no? Any other questions? I think I've been told that staff has some more comments. I think I've been told that staff has some more comments.
Yes, thank you Chair McMahon. Just want to address a couple of items that were brought up with regard to the lighting. If this project went forward, there's a technical review of photometrics, as Mr. Magdal alluded to. We would have the ability to control the light sources, shielding them so that they're not directly visible from public perspectives, and we make sure that the light intensity actually hits a, a number close to zero around the perimeter of the property. So that is something we can review. We have not reviewed any other use other than this special use permit with the gas station and the convenience store, so these are not standalone projects, these are one special use permit. We have not seen an iteration for a convenience store, which Mr. Magdal correctly states is an allowed use in the C1 zone, but does require discretionary development permit for the site planning components, and would require a setback waiver which would come before this board. So the planning commission would be looking at any future development on the site.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yes, just a follow-up question on some of the speaker comments. Sorry, I didn't ask this before. One of the speakers, I believe is Mr. Wagner, asserted that there is a state ordinance banning tobacco sales within six hundred feet of a school. Is that, is that correct? Does that apply to this case?
I'm not, I'm not aware of the number. I know there is a, a radius that they must be away. I recall a billboard regulation that they couldn't advertise within a thousand feet of, of schools, but I'm not familiar with the, the ban on the alcohol sales within six hundred feet.
This, his assertion was about the sale of tobacco within six hundred feet of a school?
Yeah, I'm not aware of that regulation.
Okay. And I'll ask the same question of Mr. Heer.
Yes, I apologize. I'm, I'm not aware of that specific regulation. I, I know there's obviously ones regarding schools, such as you can't sell smoking products at schools or at the school itself.
On school grounds, right.
But as far as that specific one, I did make a note of it, I didn't catch anything when I did a quick research for it that was very specific to that. There have been some recent changes in smoking in regards to schools, but I apologize, but I cannot affirmatively confirm or deny that, that regulation is active.
Okay. Thank you for closing that loop.
Oh, yeah. Also, just to note, you have to be twenty-one to buy cigarettes. So anybody who's looked...
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
We've heard that and we're aware of that. Thank you. Commissioner?
Mr. Kearns, I just had a quick question. On the strip mall that's to the north, what time limitations are imposed on those businesses?
Eight AM to nine PM for the center. The Domino's Pizza does have extended hours, weekends to one AM.
But not during the week?
During the week it's midnight.
Okay, thank you.
Good to him. Yeah, I think it'd be correct, two AM on the weekend.
Thank you.
And, and it should be clarified, it's not ju...
Okay. I'm sorry. Your presentation and your rebuttal, we have to do this officially. Okay. So are there any other questions of staff or the applicant?
Just as a follow-up on Commissioner Lanson's question about the hours, the Domino's hours are, that, the, whether it's one AM or two AM or whatever, is, is as a home office for delivery, correct? It's, or is it something where a customer can walk in and buy a pizza at two AM?
Their limitation on the hours was originally for take, delivery only. They did expand that for takeout. I didn't see a limitation as to what time the takeout service ends, so the entire operation is takeout and delivery at this point.
Okay. So it is possible at one AM or two AM or whatever the hour is to walk in and buy a pizza to take out?
That's correct. I'm just not sure if the operation itself stays open for take, carry out at that time.
Right, right. But in terms of what's permitted, they're allowed to, to sell stuff that's taken away from there.
That's correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, thank you. I need to put some things into the record. We did have some statement cards that, that are these green cards. There were ten of them that were positive, and there were five of them that were negative for this application. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, those were the letters we had. We had ten positive letters that were, that arrived after that supplemental package and five negative ones. And then as far as statement cards, we had twelve positive and one opposed. I'm sorry, oh, I'm getting it all wrong. We had twelve opposed and one positive of the statement cards. Okay, enough with that. And then we had petitions submitted tonight, which need to go into the record, and more petitions, and then the applicant submitted a notebook that looks long and involved. Unfortunately, we were not able to read it because we wanted to pay attention, but they need, it needs to go into the record. Okay, at this time, if there are no further questions, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the floor to a motion or discussion. Who's going to start out?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the applicant for your very thorough presentation, for your efforts to deal with the community. Thank you above all to all the citizens who came here tonight, participated as a community, who, thank you to everyone who weighed in with written comments, online, whatever. Some of you somehow found out our email addresses and got hold of us. Thank you for, I will thank you for that, that part, but for all the rest of it, community involvement is very, very important. We take that very seriously. So thank you to all of you for being part of that. I'm not ready to make a motion in either direction yet. I want to start out by reiterating, our purpose as a body is not to make policy. We can't on the fly make up a rule that says it's okay to sell cigarettes right next to a high school if there's a rule against it. There's not, as far as I know, a rule against it, but, but we can't, we can't make a rule like that if, if we wanted to. Similarly, if there are guidelines that say an application has to meet this requirement or this one or this one, we are empowered to grant waivers in certain cases to that, but they are the exceptions. Mostly our job here is to implement what the guidelines say. And so, well, I'm not quite ready to lean one way or the other yet. I want to state that I have some concerns with the application as currently constituted. One of them is the applicant's, I don't, I won't say unwillingness, because I understand it's really inability to come down unambiguously against selling tobacco right next to a high school. That's a problem. There's also a concern about twenty-four hour operation. I think the argument that the principals of the high school makes that twenty-four hour is actually more secure because there's lighting is a novel argument. I've not seen that argument made before, but I understand the basis for making that argument. I come at this from the other point of view, that a place that's open and available for more hours is more hours for possible trouble to occur. With all of that said, on the other side, I'm not against gas stations, I'm not against 7-Elevens. I've been to 7-Elevens in Asia, particularly in Japan and Taiwan and China, that are more attractive than the ones here, perhaps because they're newer and they're more tightly integrated with the community. But it's different. Those are in much, much denser settings than here where we're putting something in a residential neighborhood. And this is, this is, even though it's right on Moore Park Road, it is backed, backed up right against a residential neighborhood. So there are traffic concerns around that. That's not a deal breaker for me, it's not a showstopper, but I, if we do move forward with this, I want to be respectful of all of the concerns that staff has so, worked so hard to, to identify, and that they're doing their job. They have guidelines. Their guidelines are to say, this is, this is what's in spec and this is what's out of spec. And they've identified five areas where this application is out of spec. Some of them don't bother me very much, but the twenty-four hour operation one and the tobacco sale one, those do bother me, and I, I would not be able to support this with those aspects of the application going forward. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to hear what the rest of the commission has to say. Thank you.
Who wants to start over there?
I, I also want to thank everybody for coming out. This is, it's great that you guys actually were engaged in this process, and it's, it's an important issue for all of you because you live next to this process. As Commissioner Newman indicated, one of the problems we have here is that we are not your elected officials. You have five amazing city council people. We're not that. We cannot make new law, we can't change the gas station service guidelines. We can only actually evaluate them, interpret them, and to the extent we have some discretion within a very reasonable period of time, deal with those issues. With that said, there's a lot of problems I have with this application. There's a lot of information that was communicated late, there's a lot of information that still we're not even on the same page about, in terms of the square footage, in terms of some of the other things we've kind of been going through. So I'm, I'm concerned that I wish this was a little further along in terms of the discussion. I also, I got to be honest with Mr. Magdal, I'm not, I'm not happy you had a community outreach on December twenty-first. It's not exactly the best day for a community outreach process. There's a lot of great citizens that actually, yes, there's no property there, no concept they would have been thrilled with. And by the way, for everybody listening, the difficult thing here is that they have a right to develop their property according to the zones and permits. If you don't like that, then you have to go to a legislative body and have those zones and permits changed. We can't do that. We actually have to implement and enforce the rules that were given. If we act above and beyond that, we're acting above and beyond our appointment, and that's not something that any of us really wants to end up doing. So I, I appreciate the fact that you want to develop the property and find a, a project that fits the concept as best as possible. Would, would, you know, I would love a hairdresser there, but, you know, that's, that's just me. The reality though is, in looking at the process though, is what does it comply with? What doesn't it comply with? The square footage, I'm still confused. The, the map we got actually says twenty thousand four something, more or less. Don't know what more or less means, but it's close enough, I think, where we could actually look and say that it's substantially compliant, especially if you could work with the other owner. The, the setback issue is, is pretty large. You know, it's not a few feet, this is at large, but the reality is, if we actually enforced that, you'd have no building that you'd ever be able to put there. And that's my concern, is that it would ultimately be a waste of the property. In fact, we got a lot of letters from people saying, hey, you know, why don't you make them put a park there or put something enjoyable? And I get all that. We can't, as a city, as a commission, tell them what to build, but we can only say if it complies or not. Cities don't build houses, they don't build parks, it's usually done by developers and other people that actually have a motivation to do that. So anyway, the setback issue to me is, is an issue. From the designs, it looks like there's supposed to be some things that will mitigate that, that problem. I have a very big concern with regard to the lighting that was mentioned before. I'm hoping that as part of the condition of this process, if in fact it goes forward, there'll be some restrictions there to make sure that the, the man's poor children aren't woken up at two o'clock in the morning by, by lights. The parking and the traffic is also a big concern, because I, I think there was a nice admission by people that they park there and leave their kids there, and there'll have to be some consider, consideration done for that, to the extent it goes forward. The driveway is also, there's a lot of problems with this that I'm not entirely thrilled with. The twenty-four hours is, is something that I, I just, I see as a problem. So one of those things you're going to have to decide, Mr. Applicant, is to the extent we do impose conditions as part of this process, whether it's ours, whether it happens to be, if that's something that actually works for you. To me, I'm pretty definitive that there has to be deed restriction on all three, the vaping, the tobacco, and the alcohol, and that's kind of one of the conditions I would require as part of that process. It just is, I think it's important because it's near the school. Yes, kids aren't supposed to be buying things, but unfortunately, you admitted the very thing that I was going to say, is sometimes people don't actually follow the rules in that regard. Again, to the extent you're looking more at the service, at the, the restaurant or the, the food services, the benefit, that's, that's, that hopefully should make it up for that difference. So, you know, I'm not thrilled about a lot of different pieces of this. There'd have to be, again, further discussion with city staff to get some of these things put together, to make sure it's clear. So I would go with a lot of the recommendations that the staff has put in the, the report as to that process, but that's, that's my thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I also want to thank everybody for coming out. I, I love to see people come out and have an opinion about their neighborhoods and about their community. My, my personal feelings on this are, I remember the mobile station. I was one of those really bad drivers in the eighties and one of those kids that hung out there. I also remember another gas station on Arboz between Lynn and Moore Park, a Chevron station. I bought cigarettes at both of those gas stations before I was eighteen, and I didn't need a fake ID because my friends worked at those gas stations. So, so that is a concern of mine, because I ended up being a smoker until I was forty years old. And I started as a teenager, and that, that's when it starts. So to put a, a place that dispenses tobacco right next to a bunch of kids, that's a captive audience. And so I, I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the twenty-four hours. I'm a kid that grew up in this town. I know the places that were available to us that were twenty-four hours, and I, I know what we did when we hung out there. And so those, those issues that the other members have addressed are, are the issues that I think are of greatest concern as well. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Sorry, do you, do you want to weigh in first, or? I was going to suggest something procedural.
I will just make a quick comment. Everything that has been said up here, I pretty much agree with. The one thing I, I will say, although the twenty-four hours is, is a no-go for me, I recognize the point that people might need to get there early to fill up. So I, I could go with a five AM open time. I could not go with the twenty-four hours. That's, that's a no, no-go for me. And I think I agree with everyone else about what has been said so far.
Yeah, just quickly on the five AM point, we earlier had an application for another, for a Starbucks at a different location, not a drive-thru, but they wanted to change their hours to open at five AM. And the members of the public who came to attend that meeting stood up and said, please open this at five AM. So it's not necessarily a, a negative in all cases. I'm not any development, this isn't open space we're talking about. I think something there would be better than a fenced-off lot that's creating some problems in terms of public safety. But as all the commissioners have identified, there are a number of problems, both with the substance and with the process of the application as it, as it now stands. You've, you've heard that from all the commissioners up there. So I'll ask the chair, I'll ask Mr. Parker, Mr. Heer, if it would make sense, we can, we can vote this up or down, or we can go back to the applicant and say, we could reopen the hearing and ask the applicant if it would make sense, if they would be okay with a second continuance to try to get this application to be a hundred percent in line with the requirements that we are required to implement here. We would need to reopen the hearing to do that, but it, that's, I, I think the, the options we have at this point are to hold an up or down vote and have a pretty good idea of where that vote would go, or to send the, the applicant back to the drawing board and get this to be, to get this to be more, to get this to be a hundred percent in line with the requirements the community has identified. So we're in closed session. This is a, this is a discussion among the commissioners at this point. Thank you. So I'm, I'm okay with either of those paths. We can, we can hold the vote now, and, or we can go back to the applicant, but I, I want to... But I want to make the suggestion, as Commissioner Lanson did at our previous meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Heer, did you want to comment on that?
Well, my only comment would be that certainly this commission has authority if they want to reopen the hearing to have some type of discussion with the applicant. That is certainly possible. I would certainly say that based on all the information we have, I think there is findings he can make for a decision tonight. So I would say that we've heard the audience, we've heard the applicant and his team come up with a presentation, and you heard that. So certainly, I think, at this point, there's certainly enough information for you to make a decision, and I would certainly encourage you to think about that. But technically, if you want to open up the hearing to have some discussion, you would obviously need to do that to have any further discussion with applicant or staff.
Mr. Heer, if I may. I'm not advocating one or the other. I'm throwing out the option of going back to the applicant at this point or holding a vote. I'm okay with either of those options.
Mr. Heer, if we were to vote on this, could we make the motion with a number of changes to the applicant's request, such as time open and stuff like that?
You certainly could. I would say, the concern I would have when you make that type of motion is, you heard the applicant, I think commissioners did a good job in asking him pointed questions on certain things such as hours and tobacco and the matter with 7-Eleven, et cetera. So I think you did receive responses from him on that basis. But certainly, if you wanted to do a motion to either deny it or approve it with some type of conditions that you would put on, such as hours of operation, the thing would be is that now you have it where he has not agreed to those conditions. So even if you'd had those, he can certainly say, that's not what I wanted, and therefore I don't have what I requested. And he could certainly have a right to appeal that decision. So again, that would be the hard part, is you could do that, but without having reopening to make sure, hey, if you do five different conditions, are you okay with that? You're going back to reopening it and having discussions with them. Because you can certainly do that right now, but that's not what his application is about, as he discussed with commissioners earlier.
Okay, I would like to hear from the other commissioners as to whether they want to reopen the meeting, or if they do want to do an up or down vote. Commissioner?
In light of some of the issues that I think we need to get confirmation of in terms of some of the basic concepts, I would like a continuance. And that way, they can, again, get as much wrapped up as possible before coming back to us, so that we can actually decide something without having to sit there and pick and choose which additional things we'd have to end up going through.
Did you want to add something?
I have a question for Mr. Heer, based on what he just said.
Just to be clear for the record, that if you open it up back for the hearing for the applicant, it's his decision whether or not to continue it. He has a right to have his decision made tonight, and you certainly have the right as commissioners at this point, as the hearing has been closed, to make a decision tonight on the project.
Right. And that's my question, is on grounds of process. If the commission elects to proceed with a vote tonight, as you said, we've had a hearing, we have bases for a finding, one way or the other. If the vote went against the applicant and the applicant, this is very hypothetical, but if the applicant did not appeal, does the applicant then have recourse to come back with a new application for the same project with some modifications? Or does that kill the project forevermore?
No, he certainly can come back with the project. So sometimes commissions or elected bodies do a denial without prejudice, and what that would mean is that they could bring it back within a shortened timeframe of six months. But other than that, it would be after a period of time of over six months before they could bring a project back. So that would be one option. It certainly would be up to this commission if they want to do that. But again, I just want to clarify that if you are thinking about a continuance, you would open up the hearing again, and it's applicant's choice.
And ask the applicant, right. Has this commission done this denial without prejudice?
I know there's been one in the past where we did a denial without prejudice, and it was just to give the option of having them come back within a certain timeframe. It really is more of a timing of a six-month timeframe versus something later than that.
Okay. Madam Speaker, that would be my preference, rather than a continuance. Thank you.
Did you want to make a motion?
Sure, if that's agreeable to the commission. I move that we deny the application as currently constituted, but do so without prejudice on the understanding that the applicant would be able to come back within some specified time, and I'll use the six-month period. Mr. Heer suggested to come back with a revised application that is substantially in compliance with city guidelines and with the objections that the community and the commission has identified tonight.
Okay, just to make sure I'm clear for the motion. The staff's recommendation, according to the staff report by Mr. Kearns, was that the planning commission deny special use permit 2018-70220 based on the findings contained in the attached resolution, which is attachment four. So I think your motion is to approve staff's recommendation to deny the project. I want to make sure that's clear for one. And the second thing is, as far as without prejudice, you can add that without prejudice. I want to be clear also to you, though, that it's up to the applicant. It just gives the applicant an opportunity to bring it back faster, if that is what they choose. They don't have to bring it back in a certain timeframe. It just gives them that option if they wanted to do so.
Right. And I know I'm getting into signing statement territory with endorsing the without prejudice part, but I'm saying in doing that, what I would like to see is the reapplication, whenever it happens, six months or whenever, to address the concerns that the commission and the community has identified tonight. So, yeah.
Okay, so again, the motion is to approve staff's recommendation, which is to deny special use permit 2018-70220 based on the findings contained in the resolution, attachment number four, without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Okay.
So a yes vote is a no.
You're approving the staff recommendation, which is to deny the project without prejudice.
Commissioner?
Just so we're clear on this process, because I'm sure people are going, what? The timing of them to, if we deny without prejudice and come back, you said is six months-ish. What is the timing if we just continue?
There's no, again, there's no time limit on either one of them, per se. The denial without prejudice just means that if the applicant wanted to do so, he could bring it back earlier than typical. Because if you deny it with prejudice, then he would have to bring it back after a certain period of time. Without prejudice, it says he could, if he wishes to, to bring back a project.
Let me make it more clear. So to the extent the applicant, for whatever reason, gets up and says, yes, I'm good with continuing to deal with all these issues, it would be to a date uncertain. So it could be something that's this year, it could be something next year, depending upon circumstances.
That would be correct. It could be three weeks, two months, a year. Certainly could do that without, if we don't give a date that we're going to come back on. Typically, when you have a date on a continuance, the date certain is because there's one thing that's missing or one element that it just needs some clarification of, for example. So you would do that. If you are going to continue the matter, it would be, I would recommend that you do it without a date certain, just so it gives the applicant and staff leeway to bring it back when it's appropriate.
And see, I'm just thinking of that as a way, instead of us restarting the entire process over again, to at least pick up the pieces, so to speak, and just deal with the few issues that are outstanding at that point. I think that would be cleaner.
Right, so right now, we have Mr. Newman's motion, and that is what's before you. I mean, you can make decisions after that motion's made and then change, make options if you want to do that.
Okay.
But right now, the motion on the table is Mr. Newman's.
And if I can just add to that, if a decision was made by this body to deny the project, the applicant does still have the right to appeal that to city council if he so chooses.
Okay, one more question of procedure. Okay, I'll go first. If we wanted to ask the applicant, open the community meeting and ask the applicant if he would prefer a continuance to the motion on the floor, we can't do that before we vote on the motion?
Correct. He has the motion on the table, he'd have to withdraw the motion.
Have to do that first, okay.
And then, my recommendation would be that, I mean, the motion's on the table now. My recommendation would be to go forward with that motion, but if you wanted to say, withdraw the motion, you can certainly do that and take other steps after hearing all the comments that you heard from other commissioners.
Commissioner, you had a comment?
Sorry, I have the same process question. Commissioner Lanson's question is a good one. Is there really no difference in timing if we deny without prejudice? And if we continue, is it really the same amount of time for the applicant to come back?
It would be difficult to say, as Mr. Parker stated, that if you deny this project or approve this project, either one, it's a 10-day right of appeal from either party or any interested party could take this matter to the city council, if they give notice within 10 days of tonight's decision.
If we deny.
Or if you approve it, everyone has a right to have a hearing on it.
Right, right, right.
So it could be either way. You approve it or deny it. An interested party that does not like that decision can go to city council on appeal if they give us notice within 10 days of the decision. So that is one issue. The continuance issue is to understand that there's some clarification that you wanted to have, you can do it to a date certain. Usually, it's obviously the decision to applicant to do that, because applicant has his time tonight to have a decision made, if that's what they choose.
Okay, thank you for enumerating that there's different possibilities here. I'm asking about two possibilities in particular. One is a denial without prejudice, also without appeal. But just hypothetically, let's say that that vote is not appealed, versus the continuance, the Commissioner Lanson. Is there a difference in time for the applicant between those two options?
It's impossible to say what the difference would be.
But we're not imposing, we're not saying one has to happen faster than the other.
The biggest difference is that tonight, you've made a motion to make a decision on the project, correct? That's commissioner's decision on that. If you open it back up to have a, if you withdraw your motion and you open it back up to speak to the applicant about a continuance, that's going to be the applicant's decision on that. And the applicant gets to choose that issue. So those are probably the two primary differences. As far as denial with prejudice, without prejudice, a denial is going to be a denial. Any party can have a right to appeal that if they're interested in it, paying the fee, of course. But that's where we are at this point.
I think what Commissioner Newman is asking is, is there a benefit to the applicant to having a continuance over a denial without prejudice?
I can't speak for the applicant. It's critical that you understand that. So we have a motion to deny the project without prejudice. That's on the table. That's the decision before you right now. If you want to, you can vote on that motion. If the motion fails, you can do another action. If the motion passes, that's going to be the denial, and then the applicant or interested party could have 10 days to file an appeal of that decision. If you were to make a motion to approve the project, and that was affirmed by majority, then another interested party could actually go to city council and ask for an appeal. So those are the options. The other option would be to withdraw the motions, open it up to the applicant, to see if they want to continue it. We haven't asked that question to the applicant. I'm just saying, it's his decision on that issue.
Thank you. We have a, okay.
One final comment. I was about to pull the motion, based on how Mr. Heer answered the question, but I think based on his answer, I think we should vote on the motion. Not because I'm against the project, I'm not. I think, again, I'd like to see something happen there, but there are problems that need to be addressed. But I also think for us, we need to do our jobs. We've got an application before us, and as the deputy city attorney has said, we have enough information to make a vote. So I think we should not punt in this case, we should do that. Again, I'm conditioning that on saying that I very much hope if the application is denied, I very much hope the applicant will come back with an even better application, but I do think we should do our jobs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, in that, oh, Commissioner?
So I want to go along with this discussion that's been going on. It makes more sense to me to go ahead and have the vote, because then he has basically three options. He can either amend his application and come back to us, he can appeal it if he chooses to, if he thinks he's got a better shot with the city council, or he can move on. So he's got three options, as opposed to a continuance, where he'd just be coming back to us.
I think you're making a lot of sense there. So can we call the vote? Wait a minute.
My understanding is that we're approving the staff recommendation, not approving the application. Is that what that says?
Mr. Heer, are we approving the denial?
The motion is to approve staff's recommendation, and I'll just read it again, that the planning commission deny special use permit 2018-70220 based on the findings contained in the attached resolution without prejudice.
However, if we look on our screen, it says to allow construction of a service station and a convenience store, open 24 hours daily, so...
I'm sorry, because I'm not seeing that on my screen, so...
Yeah, so I don't think what's on our screen is consistent with the motion.
That is correct, so...
Can we start over? I'm glad you read that.
I see it now, yes.
Okay, for the sake of clarity, can we take a roll call vote as opposed to electronic, just to make the recommendation clear, which is to approve staff's recommendation that the planning commission deny SUP 2018-70220 based on the findings contained in the attached application without prejudice?
Commissioner Bus?
That's a yes.
Commissioner Cohen, absent. Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair McMahon? Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Cohen, absent. Thank you, everybody. And as has been stated before, you do have a 10-day appeal period if you wish to appeal. At this point, do we need to take a break, or do we want to move on to item number nine? Okay, all right. Let's move on to, and as you, I'll leave. Thank you so much. You were very respectful, and I really appreciate your time and efforts. Okay, all right, we will be taking a five-minute break. Thank you.
............
Welcome back. We will resume our meeting with item number nine, commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Okay. This is quite a night, huh? Okay. Did you have any commissioner comments?
Sorry I'm late? No, no, I have no comments.
All right.
I just want to make sure everybody out there, you know, that's watching kind of understands our limitation. Obviously, as planning commissioners, we interpret existing rules and regulations. We don't make new laws. We don't actually provide for modifications of existing law. We're actually just taking the codes that exist. So, again, and I felt horrible, obviously, for a lot of people that were affected by this process in terms of the effect on their families, and that's not something that we're ignoring necessarily. It's just ultimately, that's not our job, to look at those issues, especially when we have property that's owned for the actual use of what they're doing. So, again, hopefully, everybody can appreciate the difficulty we have in terms of looking at this process, which was why we were having a lot of discussion. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see, staff update, item number 10. 10A follow-up items, announcements and upcoming issues?
No items for 10A, Chair.
Okay. 10B, upcoming planning commission meetings?
We have a meeting scheduled for April 22nd. Currently, that has no items. We'll be moving forward with some type of recommendation, one way or another, in the next day or two. Following that, there is a meeting scheduled in May, which there are currently items scheduled for.
So, should I adjourn the meeting when that time comes, to the 22nd?
That is correct.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one comment on the May 20th meeting. I will not be in attendance for that meeting.
Noted. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, well, thank you, commissioners. I think we had a good meeting. It was a tough meeting, but I really appreciate everything we've done. I appreciate all the questions and the comments. And I'm going to adjourn now to 6:00 PM on April 22nd, 2019. Thank you, everybody.